Okay, good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the Waukesha County Council meeting for Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021. It is 6:01 PM and we are meeting virtually. Would you please call the roll?
Red Brown? Barry Buchanan?
Here.
Tyler Bird?
Here.
Todd Donovan? Ben Ellenboss? Carol Frazee?
Here.
Kathy Krishner? I'll go back to Red Brown. Todd Donovan?
Brown.
Brown's here.
Todd Donovan? Ben Ellenboss?
Okay, thanks Kathy. I think they'll join us. We have a quorum now, so we can get started. Could you please display the flag and then join me in the flag salute?
Our flag is a flag of the United States of America, the country of the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, and the physical liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Let's record show Councilmember Donovan has joined us. Can we, do we have a county executives' report?
Yes, sir. All right, good evening, council. I am reaching out to you again about the affordable housing initiative. My administration started this discussion a year ago, and this was one of my priorities to work on the affordable housing. However, COVID-19 pandemic did not allow us to do that work. So I did reach out to the city of Bellingham a few weeks ago, as you know, asking them to work together with the county, and thereby allowing small cities to reap the benefits of 5090 funding for affordable housing. And city council was very receptive of my proposal. Affordable housing is a countywide issue. The 5090 funds will be a help to maximize the impact and create more opportunities for affordable housing in the next five to 10 years outside of Bellingham. Any increase in affordable housing throughout the county is my aim for affordable housing availability. And I have been engaged with small city mayors since start of 2021. I did share my presentation with the council, which I gave to the mayors showcasing how Bellingham has been successful leveraging local funds to gain other funds to implement projects for a few thousand housing units in past several years. In addition to 5090, there are other funding streams like 1406 funds, EDI funds, CDBG grants, which county can deploy for affordable housing projects countywide. Such an action taken now will create opportunities over the next decade in small cities for affordable housing projects. I would like to reiterate that the local resources are not sufficient to build the projects to completion. However, the local funds start the chain reaction for eligibility to seek funds from federal sources like HUD, like USDA, and the state funds from the Department of Commerce and Washington Housing Trust, and many other agencies, as well as some philanthropic dollars. Every $1 of local government investment, local fund investment in affordable housing can potentially catalyze up to $3 in state and federal funding and $7 in private funding. And this is not just a number. It has been proven by city of Bellingham many times over. Now, there will be another huge opportunity to make serious community investments from the American Rescue Plan funds, and we expect more clarity on that in the next couple of months. We have had discussion in this council several times over several years that instead of giving rental assistance or utility assistance, why don't we invest funds to increase the inventory of affordable housing for more permanent solutions? Yes, this is the opportunity, and I would really like to make a request to the council members to discuss this opportunity and approve the ordinance for 5090 funds tonight. And I will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank executives to do. Any questions? Okay, we'll move on.
So, no problem. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to, we have four sets of minutes to approve. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
We have a motion by Donovan, second by Bird. Any discussion, corrections, additions, or deletions to those minutes? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Krishner?
Yes.
That passes 7-0, and after that roll call, let the record also show that all council members are now present. We will now move into public hearings. Public hearings are held virtually. We'll have a video to explain the process for testifying. So Kathy, if you could roll that for us now, and everybody could turn their cameras off while that video is playing, would be great.
Welcome to the meeting. For instructions on how to join the meeting to speak, please visit waukeshacounty.us/joinvirtualcouncil. Meeting information, including Zoom meeting link, phone number, webinar or meeting ID, and password are available under the meeting date at the bottom of the page. Members of the public may join the meeting online or by phone. The meeting is broadcast live and recorded. All speakers will have three minutes. When you've joined the meeting, please virtually raise your hand to request to speak. To virtually raise your hand online, click the hand icon at the lower area of your screen. To virtually raise your hand by phone, dial *9 on your keypad. Council staff will call on you by the name listed, or if you're joining by phone, by the last three digits of the phone number from which you're calling. When called upon to speak, click the microphone icon to unmute, or if joining by phone, wait till you hear a message indicating the host unmuted your phone. Please first state your full name for the record. Staff will announce when your three-minute speaking time is up. Camera sharing will not be offered at this meeting. Thank you for joining the meeting.
Okay, thank you Kathy. We will now go to our first public hearing, which is AB 2021-134, which is an ordinance amending Waukesha County Code, Section 1.14 Electoral Precincts for changes in certain voting precinct boundaries in Waukesha County. Before we have the hearing, is there anyone from the auditor's office that wants to give us an overview?
Diana Bradrick, County Auditor, and I have with me Amy Graishere, the election supervisor. These precinct revisions are being made specifically because with the growth of registered voters, they had grown beyond the statutory limit of 1,500 registered voters per precinct. So we were required to make adjustments, and they needed to be completed before filing week in May. So they're size adjustments, and for every precinct that we're having to reduce the size, there's an adjacent precinct that will be increased slightly. So there's, I think, 14 precincts that are affected.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Donovan?
Diana, so we can't do the redistricting right now because we don't have the census data. It's been delayed. So how are we able to do the precincts? Is it like OPM estimates? Like what are the data for the numbers on the precincts?
Reprecincting, redistricting, sorry, reprecincting related to redistricting is based on census data, which is population. So the districts are rebalanced based on population numbers. And then the precincts have to be adjusted because the district boundaries have changed, and there are requirements about precincts can't have more than one legislative district in it, can't have more than one council district in it. So the reprecincting is directly for that, is directly related to the district boundaries changed. This precincting exercise is related to, a precinct is based on registered voters per precinct, so it's two different numbers.
That makes sense, thanks.
Councilmember Frazee?
Yes, I think we had this question before. If a precinct officer is on the edge of that line and gets pushed over, or they finish with that precinct then in May, or whenever we change the lines?
They are. Part of the process when we have to make these adjustments is we notify the parties, and we did. In this particular case, we were able to make adjustments that did not impact any of the PCOS except in one precinct. And she is moved into another precinct that actually doesn't have a PCO for it. So she will be able to retain her position as a PCO. She'll just be a PCO in a different precinct number.
Anything else before we open the hearing? Okay, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on the precinct adjustment?
If anyone would like to speak at this time for this item on precinct boundaries, please raise your hand virtually by clicking the hand icon or dialing *9 by phone. There are no hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. We'll close the public hearing. What are the wishes of the council?
We do approve.
Donovan moves, and Bird seconds. Discussion. Okay, please call the roll.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Krishner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Her second public hearing is AB 2021-135, an ordinance regarding temporary installation of stop signs on Noon Road at 10 Mile Road and East Hemi Road at Noon Road. Is there anybody from staff that has any overview on this, or should we just go into the hearing?
Councilmember Buchanan, Jim Karcher, Public Works Engineering. So basically, this is a road closure project to replace a culvert at East Hemi Road to take care of some longstanding drainage issues where we have water over the roadway. The two stop signs its ordinance is related to would facilitate the detour plan and make it safer. And that's it.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Okay, we will, any questions for Jim at all before we open the hearing? Seeing none, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on the stop sign issue?
If you'd like to speak on the stop sign issue, please click the hand icon in the lower area of your screen, or if you're joining by phone, you can dial *9 to request to speak. There are no hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. We will close the public hearing and turn it back to council.
I move to approve.
Yeah, I'll second. Todd beat me to moving again.
Todd moves, and Councilmember Bird seconds. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Krishner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes. That passes unanimously. Next up is AB 2021-147, an ordinance establishing a fare, that's F-A-R-E, capital surcharge for the Lemmy Island Ferry System. Is there a staff overview on this? Hi Roland.
Good evening. I believe Raima Blake from Life Act would like to introduce this. Raima is on.
Okay, Raima.
Thank you. Since February 2020, Lemmy Island, sorry. Lemmy Island Ferry Advisory Committee has, and the working group that the council formed at the same time, has been studying alternatives to fund the ferry modernization project. The ordinance you're looking at tonight calls for a $1 capital surcharge on fares, puts the owners on ferry users and not taxpayers. The Lemmy Island Ferry Advisory Committee voted unanimously on February 10th to approve this, and not often do we have unanimous votes. So we have provided facts to the islanders through our monthly newsletter and several other sources such as Nextdoor, et cetera. And in general, nobody's happy about a fare increase, but in general, nobody has a better idea, and we all need the new ferry. So your approval tonight will enable Public Works to proceed with applying for a build grant, federal and other state funds also, saying that we do have a local source of funding for this capital project in place. And since the ferry is the only capital piece, infrastructure that does not have a replacement fund, it is important to have this in place. So I urge your approval tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Raima. Any questions? Okay, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak?
If you'd like to speak on this item, please raise your hand virtually by clicking the hand icon if you're joining by computer, and if you're joining by phone, dial *9. There are no hands raised at this time.
Okay, we will close the public hearing, and council, what would you like to do? Councilmember Donovan?
Yeah, I'll move to approve, and just to point out that the Lemmy Island Ferry Advisory Committee heard, I think, a pretty clear message from the council that there was not an interest in a countywide taxing district to pay for this. So they're doing this capital charge to have skin in the game, and this helps the grants for applying for grants, which we were talking about this afternoon, to show that there's a funding plan that involves this. So that's where this is coming from, and I support it, and so I submit.
Okay, so do we have a second before we continue?
I'll second.
I'll second it.
Okay, we've been seconded. I think Councilmember Krishner was first. So discussion, Mr. Bird, and then Mr. Ellenboss.
Yeah, fix. The way I read this and understand it is that the $1 surcharge is going to be applicable to basically everyone, including island residents for every, basically, ride, right, in either direction. Is that correct?
That's correct. It will apply to all rides, and they only charge one way for the boat. It will try for everything except for the needs-based fares, the senior disability fares, and the student multi-ride fares, which is a very small percentage. But Life Act and Raima can speak to this as well, wanted to be sensitive to those who are, have income restrictions. But the vast majority of the fares will be charged. This will raise approximately $160,000 a year.
So in the past, if you're a resident, then you would pay a discounted rate, but this, that's not the case.
This would be a dollar for every fare. So whether you're buying punch cards or buying it one at a time, if you buy a punch card that has 25 rides, that punch card will be $25 more. If you're buying a single ride, it'll be $1 more.
And then is there an end date to this?
No, this would continue on until the council changes. It will be part of the fare schedule. It will be part of the unified fee schedule, and we added to Chapter 10.34, the ferry rates.
Okay, last question. How much is this anticipated to raise every, or per year?
Per year, it's about $160,000.
It's gonna be a long time to pay this off. The, okay.
It's a portion, yeah.
Councilmember Ellenboss?
Yeah, I guess my only question was, are we sure that our, that our system's working here? Because not one person wanted to speak on this issue. I guess my experience is with, you know, places like Lemmy Island and Point Roberts, and any other community that can often feel marginalized. They would want to address us. But nothing, huh?
Yeah, I'm not sure, Ben.
This is Kathy Holka with the council office, and I did see some hand raising working before we opened the public hearing. Likely someone who wanted to speak in open session and is waiting. So I believe it is working, and we just have not seen any raised hands.
Okay. Councilmember Krishner?
Yeah, I wanted to ask Roland, you said a small percentage of the island's residents fall into the low-income or disabled or student population. Do you have numbers on that, Roland?
Not specifically. I asked the ferry coordinator, and she said there's about a couple hundred that go out every year. And those are, I believe, 20, 20 ride trips. So it is a relatively small percentage, a few percent of the amount of fares.
Okay, I just want to comment that while I think it's a nice gesture that we don't raise the rates on both populations, I also think that it's important to make sure that people that are using the public resource of the ferry are also contributing to the new costs. So I'm going to support this today. And I would have supported a smaller surcharge for that, those particular groups of folks. And I do want to say thank you to the ferry committee for coming up with a financial plan that did not include a countywide tax increase. I think you guys really put a lot of work into this and bringing it to us today. I'm happy to support it.
Councilmember Donovan?
I just want to, yeah, response to Councilmember Ellenboss, because I totally understand, like, you have these small communities, and we're not hearing from them. There's so much process and input over the last couple of years, and Raima and everybody can confirm this to us. So I think, I think we've heard a lot about the concerns about this, but I think the community, I would speak for them, but like, they've sort of accepted that this is something to get this thing going. So the fact that we're not hearing, we've got a few emails, but that we're not hearing from it doesn't mean there's not been a lot of engagement, a lot of discussion. And if you get the same sort of structure in Point Roberts that we got out on Lemmy, in terms of how we get that input, I think we'd be all served.
Councilmember Bird?
Yeah. In line with that same topic or portion of the conversation. You know, with this issue, which I would have expected to be pretty popular, but combined with the next one for the tax increase, I would expect that to also be a pretty hot topic. I'm surprised that there's only 20 people here tonight to talk to these two items. One of the things I'm also wondering is, you know, I saw at least one person here raise their hand, and then it looks like they dropped off altogether. And knowing a couple of people that live out there on the island, it seems like they have really poor cellular service, and I'm not sure what the internet is, but without us meeting in person, I guess I'm wondering, what is the capability of these individuals to actually log in and speak to us tonight? And have we considered that?
Councilmember Ellenboss?
Yeah, I was just, the reason I said that is because most of the time when we, I get a lot of phone calls about it, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Any other discussion on the motion, Mr. Brown?
Mr. Ellenboss, you're extremely lucky at the moment. So I wish I was in your shoes. I think there's two comments about this. One is that irrespective of any perceived potential technical difficulties, people have certainly had an opportunity to email us on this issue. And we've had very little correspondence, so I take that to mean that the majority of people out there do not have an objection to this, because it's financial, and it's significant enough that if they did, I think they would have said so. And the other thing too is that, you know, this is, this is an example, I think we're going to see frequently over the next decade, which is the need to fund capital reserves that haven't previously been funded by, in an effort to keep the fare or the fees or whatever the utility charge or whatever the case may be, is to keep it down low, but doing so at the expense of maintaining the integrity of that system over a long period of time, which is what you get when you build a capital reserve.
Any other discussion on the motion? Councilmember Bird?
Yeah, I'll clarify. Kathy just sent me a message saying that the hand I saw was, was her testing to make sure everything was functioning correctly. So, yeah, thanks for that, for checking and clarifying. Appreciate it.
Okay, oh, Mr. Ellenboss?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, if you wonder why I let her sit on my lap every, once every meeting, it's because she cries if I don't. So it makes it quieter in the house if she gets to sit there for a minute.
Okay, seeing no more discussion, let's, let's vote on this.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Krishner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
You betcha.
That passes 7 to 0. Our last public hearing is AB 2021-164, ordinance imposing an additional sales and use tax of 1/10th of 1% for housing and related services as authorized by RCW 82.14.530, adding a new Chapter 3.47 to the Waukesha County Code. I think Executive Sudeik went over this in pretty good detail. Do you want any, anything else you have to add, Executive Sudeik?
No, I will be here to answer any questions or maybe participate in the discussion. Thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead and open the hearing. Open the public hearing. Okay, let's go ahead and open the hearing. Open the public hearings. Are there anyone that wants to speak?
If anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand virtually by clicking the hand icon or dialing star nine on your phone. The first speaker is Joy Gilfillan, followed by Marcus D. and Brian Thane. We'll go ahead with Joy. Please state your full name for the record. You have three minutes.
I'm Joy Gilfillan from Bellingham, Watcom County, Washington, and I'm glad to see that the council is looking at homeless housing and helping our unsheltered people and our people who are dealing with incarceration issues, who are unable to find shelter and housing and emergency type services at a very, I mean, we've got really increasing problems in the community and in the county as evidenced by what's happening at the city of Bellingham. And my concern, this is another one of the sales taxes that didn't seem to, in at least it didn't seem to come out very broadly in the market as a big conversation. And the the county has consistently voted down the jails and use tax, you know, the jail tax initiative. And I'm just hoping, and I would like to be reassured, that the goal of passing this tax is not a way to get around dealing with. I mean, I'm hoping that the purity of your intent here is in fact to help the housing and the the homeless and the behavioral health and that hidden inside here is not another way to get money to build another jail. The public is very clear that they wanted a community needs assessment. It was very clear that they wanted health and safety and I I was, I'm deeply concerned about the fact that our community is not putting as much money into taking care of people and in this emergency services condition, the city is having to carry this whole huge load of emergency care. And of trying to find housing. So I'm hoping that this is an authentic move by the county to help solve the safety nets and the the human elements that are happening in Watcom County. So I'm, I'm I'm trusting you guys that you're being authentic about this. We need humanizing systems. We need holistic solutions. We need to be treating people like they are sons and daughters and family members, not just items on a spreadsheet. So thank you for doing the work and I know you're probably going to pass it anyway, but I'm just putting in that caveat. So thank you.
The next speaker is Marcus D. Go ahead, please. State your full name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi, this is Marcus D. Stidham. Good evening, esteemed council. I'm speaking to you both as a county appointed advisor and also as a part of the leadership of S O S Bellingham Serenity Outreach Services. We're a new nonprofit. We've we've come to four so that we can try to help with the situations that we've seen throughout the winter of the unsheltered citizens. Many of which were exemplified, but not certainly all of them were exemplified on the lawn at City Hall. We really want to bring a variety of solutions forward with in partnership with the government. We invite those conversations and we see them. We see that they are urgently needed. I'd like to remind everyone here that we're in a pandemic emergency. And i- it's it's to you, the Board of Health, that I speak tonight. You know, like I said, I wear a couple of different hats and I know that you wear those hats. We've got a real problem in Bellingham right now. The B P D, take my word for it. Nothing that they have done regarding this group that we see on the ground has been legal or by their own policies since January twenty eighth. Uh, we are in a pandemic. They're not following C D C nor our own local health department recommendations in in their moves. They put out statements recommending people displace and disperse throughout our city during this pandemic into small groups all over the place. Uh, but when those people tried to do that, they found a cop at every flat piece of ground in Bellingham telling them, no, you can't. And that's illegal too. They can't do that. You know, they're supposed to tag a camp when a camp sets up, but you can't just like meet people at every potential spot where they might want to rest their head and say, keep moving. So this is what's going on in this pandemic. It's still raining. It's very cold. I'm I'm asking you to please take another quick, another really strong re-observation of what's going on. I'd love to chat with any of you. I my my door is always open. I think you know that I will respond and that I and that I that I want to be part of the solution with you. I'm I'm hoping to find partnership with government to come to a solution on this, and I don't think we're anywhere near solving it. Emergency shelters are in order. Right now, the city is taking all basically all the money from that new tax and they're putting it toward the upper echelon toward housing, but not not to sheltering these people. And also they're, at the same time, they're advising the public to quit donating to these people and instead donate to providers who aren't donating to these people. These people are this are suffering for that. It's 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 they're being singled out. I know there's there's a protest that's that's also associated with this. But we must not forget these these citizens, these fragile citizens, and I'm asking the health board to please attend this and attend it with me, please. Give me a call. I'll be glad to talk with you.
The next speaker is Brian Thane, followed by H K Mobile. Go ahead, Brian. Please state your full name for the record. You have three minutes.
Good evening, council members, and thank you for considering this measure. My name is Brian Thane. I am executive director of the Watcom County Housing Authority. We recognize that the sales tax is regressive, but our needs are growing and we really must employ every tool available to us. The gap of permanent affordable housing opportunities in our county continues to increase. We also have growing needs for behavioral health services to enable many of our most vulnerable neighbors to achieve and maintain stable housing. As Executive Sudek notes, the funds generated by this measure will attract significant investment from other sources to help our community achieve solutions. I encourage you to adopt this measure. Thank you very much.
If anyone else would like to speak during this public hearing, please raise your hand virtually by clicking the hand icon on your screen or dialing star nine. Our next speaker is H K Mobile, followed by Paul Schisler. Go ahead, H K Mobile. Please state your full name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi Kathy, is this the general open public comment time?
No, this is specific to the sales tax for A B twenty twenty one dash one sixty four.
Okay, my apologies.
We'll go to Paul Schisler and then Ken Dahmerad. Go ahead, Paul. Please state your full name for the record. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. I am here to ask you to vote yes in favor of this measure. As Brian Thane mentioned, it is never a happy thing to have to raise taxes, but we we have urgent needs in the community. And this is one way we can leverage a lot more non-local funding to address the need for permanently affordable homes for people who cannot afford the market price. I wanted to note that it it is not an insignificant amount, but for the average household, if 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 a household spends, for example, twenty thousand dollars per year of taxable expenses, it would be a twenty dollar a year contribution to help solve the problem. So point one percent on twenty thousand dollars is twenty dollars per year. So not insignificant, but a modest amount that adds up to two million dollars a year countywide. So I hope with that in mind, you'll be able to vote yes. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ken Dahmerad. Go ahead, Ken. Please state your full name for the record. You have three minutes.
Yes, good evening, council. My name is Ken Dahmerad. I live in District Two. Not trying to get into the philosophical conversation about what role the government plays in providing housing for its constituents. There are two other things I'd like to talk about, very briefly about this. Number one, I always have a concern when we have a tax increase that does not go to the vote of the people and that does not have a sunset clause on it. I would invite the council to revisit this situation or this this tax increase with the potential for placing a sunset clause that the tax goes away in the next ten or twenty years unless it's renewed, preferably with a vote of the people. The second part also is that it's kind of the the spending, I understand, is is clear to be directed towards affordable housing and mental health services and things of that nature. But it it doesn't say we're going to raise enough money to build twenty seven housing units and then we no longer need to tax and it goes away or or that it decreases for maintenance purposes. It it's it's kind of open ended. I mean, while it's directed, what the money is intended to be used for, you know, at some point, if you build two hundred housing units or five hundred housing units, how many more do we need to build? You know, that I I don't feel like the homelessness problem is one that's going to be solved solely by increasing taxes, especially not a regressive tax such as a sales tax. I also think that I I don't know what work has been done to look at incentivizing existing landlords or or people that might be interested in becoming landlords or multi-unit housing owners through tax decreases in order to allow them to reduce housing or reduce prices for housing versus just increasing prices for everybody else. So I think this is a very, very it it, you know, in the grand scheme of things, like the previous speaker said, twenty dollars for twenty thousand dollars, twenty thousand dollars of taxable spending in a year. It's an insignificant increase, but uh, it's also not something that's going to fix the problem. This is a Band-Aid on a much larger problem. It's a very regressive method of of addressing this issue or trying to address this issue. And I think that it should be coupled coupled with efforts to reduce barriers to housing and reduce barriers to people getting even providing housing to other people at a at a lower income. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
If anyone else would like to speak during this public hearing, please raise your hand virtually by clicking the hand icon at the bottom of your screen or dialing star nine if you're joining by phone. There are no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. We will close the hearing and council, what would you like to do?
I would move to approve for discussion.
Second.
And Frazee seconds. Okay, discussion on the motion. Councilmember Frazee?
Yes, first I want to thank Executives to do for bringing this forward and also Councilmember Donovan and Chair Buchanan. I think we do, we do need to start making bold moves toward affordable housing and helping with mental health services and facilities. And I think this is the first step. And how we all can contribute, I think it's ten cents per hundred dollars, which is not insignificant, but I think we need to start moving forward. We keep talking about affordable housing and I think this is a a step toward that. So I will be voting for it.
Other discussion? Councilmember Kirshner?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to comment on a couple of things. One is that twenty dollars a year is not an insurmountable amount of money. But it could be if you look back over the last decade and you figure out how many extra cups of coffee we've asked people to give up in order to fund various programs. So I I think that we need to keep that in mind. And I I did send an email to executives to do and C C at the council with all of the increased costs and and taxes that are being discussed, both statewide and nationally. I mean, just the increase in the cost of gas, you know, it it costs twenty dollars now more to fill your tank up than it did a couple of months ago. I I think that while we do need affordable housing and I'm not opposed to programs that will help support that, I think that our community should be asked whether or not they support this tax. And I think that if the, you know, the case can be made that our community is very generous and giving and would support it if if the value in the program, you know, could be explained. I'm concerned that there was very few people at the public hearing talking about a tax increase. That just seems very odd. And then finally, I'll just say, I'm not sure that this is really the first step or a step that's gonna help us where we have the most dire need, which is the folks that have an incredible difficult time with housing because they have other issues that they need addressed as well. This is going to help kind of that upper echelon, as somebody said in the comments of the homeless population that can afford to buy a home that isn't, you know, abusing drugs or having unresolved mental health issues. And that's probably where the majority of our effort should be. So Marcus and Joy both, you know, giving public testimony about the concerns of the groups of people that they're supporting. I'm not sure this is, this program is really going to be designed for the folks that were residing at Camp Two Ten. So I'm not going to support this tonight. I don't think that's a surprise. I'm going to, I would support, put it on a ballot for the public to weigh in on. Thank you.
Yeah, I think I'm kind of in the same boat as Councilmember Kirshner. I wouldn't mind paying this tax personally and but I think that the people should decide and you know, I do see that the people in my district tend to not like to pass these kind of taxes. And I don't think it's because they're not compassionate. I think it's because I don't think they have any trust that the money gets spent in a productive manner. I I think there's a lot of stuff the executive's office could do to help with affordable housing that wouldn't cost a dime specifically around the things that happen at the Northwest Annex Planning and Development Services. And so I'd love to share some ideas there if anybody ever wants to hear them. But I can't support this tax. Maybe if we'd done some of the things that didn't cost money first, I'd be more willing to support it, but I really think it needs to go to the people.
Other discussion? Councilmember Brown?
I I think the reality of this is that we will increase the number of affordable housing units which will benefit because of the the amount of money at the end of the day is not that large, will will benefit a small, smaller number of people than we would want. The reality though is it's not going to make housing more affordable for everybody else. And we have to find solutions to that, that because that's because that the in the in affordability of housing is increasing for every year far more rapidly than the amount that this taxes is going to represent. And the challenge, I think, really is the funding for that has to come at the federal level. And we have to keep pushing back for the federal level response to homelessness, mental health and the housing crisis. Because unfortunately, a jurisdiction that turns around and decides to tax itself to increase affordable housing is, I think, going to end up getting more people coming there at a rapid, at a rate greater than our ability to provide that affordable housing. And so that's my concern.
Councilmember Donovan?
Thanks. I kind of, I appreciate all the comments here. And I'll try to explain why I support this. It's not just our lighting is really weird. It's not just about Camp Two Ten and I I think the majority of these funds, it's a sixty forty split that could be for permanently permanently affordable housing. for permanently, permanently affordable housing or housing and then mental health. And we can decide to have more of that just on land and buildings and, and you know, constructing housing that will be permanently affordable, which I think is like our priority. And then on some the other side, we could use some of the mental health money. But it's a regressive tax and that's Washington. We have the worst regressive tax system in the country and that's where we're stuck with. But the, but these funds will, will benefit people who are on the lower end of the income spectrum. But I mean, I, I look at it as an economic development thing, like that, that, you know, we need, we can use, the, the, the legislation says, you know, these are seniors and veterans and, and people would, you know, lit below the median income, but not so far below the median income. But it's like, you know, people who are working and, 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 you know, partnering with, with expanding some of these programs we have with nonprofits and, and for profits, you know, and just developers and incentivizing to make, to make housing throughout the county, not just in the city, that can, you know, be affordable for veterans and seniors and, and, and other folks who are working and not making high median incomes. So, so, you know, I hope you all are all supportive, but I, but I also think like, you know, we don't have that much more time to find the land and find the, you know, the development opportunities to do these in our cities. So this is, you know, we, we had an op, and, and this is what the state law allows us to do. You know, we, we had the, the one tenth for mental health that we passed. I wasn't on council then. That was passed and I think, I think Sam Crawford was the defining vote on getting that one across the board and not putting it to the voters just because we needed to do it. So that's why I'm on this. I hope you all support it.
Councilmember Bird.
Thanks. I got a lot of thoughts on this topic, obviously, but the, I'll start here. Growing up, I was raised by a single mother, four kids and a few dogs, right? The, my mom didn't have a college degree. We didn't have family here to support her or us or help out. I can't tell you how many times that she would make dinner and not eat because we didn't have enough money and she had to make sure that us as kids had the food on our plates. And it was just kind of how we grew up, right? I say that because $20 per 20,000 doesn't mean anything to you if you have $10 million sitting in the bank or you own your house right now and have a couple hundred thousand dollars in equity or any of us here that make what we make between the different jobs that we have. It means a ton to the other people out there who don't. And it's not just $20 that we're talking about. I mean, those people are going to pay because a lot of their checks are going towards those things at the end of the day that they need and it will make a big difference in their lives. So they, I'm not convinced that this is going to help the problem either. And so it's not going to decrease their rent. It's not going to lower their housing costs for them so that it's easier for them to get by at, at the end of the day. We don't have a plan for how the money is going to be spent. We don't know how many units we're going to get, over what period of time we're going to get those units. We don't know by what percentage we're going to decrease the costs of those units that we may potentially build. Today we have EDI funds that are available for projects and they could be used for stuff like this. We have a ton of opportunity in zoning improvements to bring down the process and time and the costs associated with developing houses. But we haven't gone down any of those roads to consider what those opportunities might be. We're looking at it and we're saying, hey, like this might be the easy thing for us to go out there and do, but it doesn't necessarily mean that it's the right thing for us to go out there to do right now. Not to say that you shouldn't do something along these lines, but not in this way. And definitely not without the voters chipping in and, and having their say. And we're looking at right now an unknown economy where we don't know how many people in our community have been laid off, have lost their jobs, haven't been able to pay their rent, haven't been able to pay their utility bills. We don't know how many homeowners out here currently are renting out units that haven't been able to collect on rent in the last 12 months. The, we don't know what the economic hardship is in general in our community. What we do know is that the federal reserves coming out and saying, hey, we're so worried about the inflation and the costs that we're going to see in the future, then we're going to start raising the interest rates right now, even during a period of time in which the feds are coming out in Congress and saying, hey, we have to inject the economy with another $1.3 trillion because we're so worried about the economy and what might happen. And, and so we're going to say, hey, costs of living in general are going to go up for all of these people with unknown circumstances. And now we're going to layer on another tax for them to have to pay. And that's going to be on top of every new tax that the state actually levels out there too, that the cities might bring and that the feds might add on. And we don't have any idea what those costs are or how they're all going to tally up and affect a single individual or a household. If you move forward with this, you have to do it, in my opinion, by taking it to the voters and letting them to decide and educating them. And if it's the right thing to do and everyone agrees, then everyone's going to get on board and support that. And you've seen that because Bellingham's had their housing fund for the last few years that they've taken to the ballot and voters have approved it. So to assume voters won't approve this is to assume that, it has to be assumed, I guess, then that it's a not, that it's not a good deal. That it's a bad program. And if it is a good program, then you have to know your community and the fact that the community has routinely got some behind and supported these types of taxes and that they would get behind this tax as well, if that's the case. It bothers me a little bit that we're not going down that route, especially after we spent three months this summer talking about goals. And council member Donovan routinely argued that housing affordability and the number of houses on the market wasn't something that was even a county issue that we could impact. And now instead of looking at any other options and throwing that argument out and that whole discussion out after months, we're all of a sudden going to support a tax that we're going to give voters no say in other than a meeting in which is online. We've heard routinely people struggle to log in and we ourselves see firsthand that we don't get the level of participation that we used to for in-person stuff. And so i- is it really the right way for us to go about this? I don't think it is. And at the end of the way, do you really think builders aren't building in this county because they can't afford to build, or excuse me, they're not going to get the profit margin? They're, they're not able to build a house that they can sell? You know, that's not the case. I mean, builders are out there, they're, they're flaunting it a bit to build new properties. I mean, they'd love to build more properties. The reason we're not building more housing units isn't because they can't afford to build the units. It's because our process to get a permit takes so long that it's difficult to get through and we have hardly any property for us to develop. And so if we want to solve the problem and really get down to the core issue of supplying affordable housing to the people who need it in a way that is not going to negatively impact them, then maybe we should start there and start looking at how do we open up more opportunities for us to build affordable units and quickly. Instead of only looking at the easy answer, which is to raise taxes without letting voters decide and have a say.
Councilmember Brown and then executives to do.
I, I think Mr. Bird does touch on a couple of points that are really relevant, but the, the thing that's going to drive affordable housing in this community is infill density and land supply. Now, down in Houston, you can buy a house for quarter of, a brand new house in a sub-development for quarter of a million dollars. I was looking at something in, in an area of Tennessee, you can buy a house, a new house for $120,000. Now, it's certainly not going to be a mansion or a palace in any regard, but clearly they've got land supply available that is serviced with the utilities and so forth. Whatever we do here is, if we, if we vote for this tax and put it in place, it is such a small amount relative to the size of the problem. And the problem has to be dealt with by increasing the, the availability of housing, period, which again is infill density and land supply.
Executives to do.
Boy, there's a lot to unpack here. I'll make my best attempt. The first thing is I'll start, I've made some notes to Joy Gilfert's point. Joy, I can assure you that the way the law is written and, and it passed on 20, 2019, it was, and the provision that you don't have to go to the voters was that there are very strict guidance on where these funds can be used. It can only be, there are only two purposes that they can be used. One is for affordable housing and the second one is for certain percentage can be used for behavioral and mental health services, period. There's no other use. So the other thing is, is that Ken, I think brought some very good points. And Ken, I just want to say to you that this money is not going to build all the homes. This money is a catalyst. This money is an incentive which will allow to leverage other funds which otherwise are not, we're not even eligible to get those. It is every $1 spent by local funds can gather up to $10 from other resources. This is not the total 100% of the money. So keep in mind, the, 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 so, so please, yes, we, I agree that some of the points you have raised. This is an incentive to the builders and developers. And this is not just a talk. It has been proven time and again. I actually gave a presentation to the mayors and, and all the small city mayors and shown them number of projects which have been actually built in Bellingham with this policy. The other thing is, is economic development issues, land use policies. I think what, I had a great discussion with Mr. Brown, probably last six, seven weeks, several times on, on this very issue. We are not going to change the market. If you believe that no city, county, state has the power to change the market. What we are trying to do, we are trying to carve out a small piece in this difficult market, which can be made affordable if we are able to achieve 10% of the housing, which is permanent affordable housing, then we have done our job. I don't think that what county has the horsepower to say change the market. Now, the other thing is, I want to say, maybe I will try to minimize this. There are many, many, many ways to say no. It's very easy. It takes a lot to say yes. It takes a lot to dig deeper and find out how this money will be spent. And how this money, this kind of money has been spent already. There's an example for that. And I've been studying this for more than a year, not me alone, the whole team in the administration. I have had meetings with all the developers. I had a meeting with all the CEOs of the, of the nonprofit organizations who, who build, develop and manage these homes. Mercy Housing, Catholic Housing, Opportunity Council, Cultural Land Trust, Paul Schisler. I had everybody, I had a call, the meeting of all the CEOs, get their ideas, that how we can make a difference. Now, gas prices. Yeah, if the gas price is tomorrow $5, does anybody has a say in that? We are saying we want a say for $20 a year. That it is unconscionable to ask somebody to give $20 a year. I, I'm just philosophizing this. And, and, and we say that I don't want to support this, but you could increase that by $300 a year. Somebody else, we have no control and we just eat it. The other part is, how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. This is a complex problem. People are saying, unless you have a solution for the whole thing, let's not do anything. That's exactly what we have done for the last 20 years. I think we would be sitting in a much better position if somebody has taken these steps 10 years ago. Look at the water issue. I'm just giving you examples. When you kick the can down the road, the can doesn't go away. You walk over to the can again, it comes in your way. You keep walking, can is still in front of you. Somebody has to pick up the can and do something with it. This is very easy. Oh, I can't do it. Let somebody else do it. Let's wait 10 years, how things will happen. So this is an elephant. We have to eat it. Let's take a bite. Thank you.
Councilmember Frazee.
I'm going to go off the elephant analogy there. I don't think this tax is going to solve everything, but it is the first step. And I think it's a good step and if we can combine the infill and the density and everything that everyone's saying here, we are going to make a big difference. And one thing that really stuck out to me is when I read over House Bill 1590 where this comes from, it says who it's going to help and it says persons with behavioral health disabilities, veterans, senior citizens, homeless or at risk or being homeless, families with children, unoccupied homeless youth or young adults, person with disabilities or domestic violence survivors. And I think this is a first step and we can combine everything and really make a difference. I just think we need to take little pieces and take that bite out of the elephant and then combine other bites of elephant and put it all together and help this.
And I was going to say the same thing that Carol just said. I'm supporting this as well because, you know, we have to, we have to work along the whole continuum of housing, whether it be at, at the sheltering end, all the way through to the permanently affordable housing end. And this is one tool in our toolbox that we can use. We have 1406 is another tool for another, another set of problems. But we have, we have other, other sources of income that we can rally and make this work and look for opportunities in the future for grants and so on. So I, I think it's just a, it's, it's, I, it's unconscionable for me to not to support this because we have to start somewhere. We have to take the first bite out of that elephant as, as you said, or a unicorn or whatever you want to call it. But I am definitely going to support this. Councilmember Donovan.
All right, now we're eating elephants and unicorns. It's kind of ticking me off my guard here. Actually, I wanted to respond to something supportive of what Mr. Brown said. So yeah, we need infill, we need density, I mean, land supply to lower the houses, the housing cost. But I think the 1590 money that we're talking about here, it's what those things won't do. Like, you know, we're, we're, we have developers who, they'll, they will build to their maximum profit and they will build, they'll build housing that the people that this, this bill won't be able to afford. And so if we can contribute, and it's not going to be enough, and we contribute some of that, to that supply. I mean, I don't know where this goes with the elephant unicorn thing, but it, I, I, I think that's, that's the point of this. It's, it's, it's where the market isn't, and I, and I agree, like we need, and I think the city is, if you drive around Bellingham, there's cranes all over Sammish, there's cranes, you know, if there's density going up on State Street, it's not just land supply. Like they're doing infill, they're doing density and those are not going to be necessarily the kind of housing that's going to get sub-income, sub-meeting income, you know, seniors and veterans and, and just folks. So this, this isn't going to fix everything. And, and, and this actually, and if we do it, it, it kind of, it helps get some of that remedy out into some of the smaller cities and such. So I don't know about unicorns and elephants and I probably, probably would need elephants, so I don't, I don't.
Mr. Brown.
Well, elephants are easy to find than unicorns.
I still won't eat them.
Look, you know, the reason housing, housing is unaffordable is if we've got a, have we got a thousand rental properties now, you want to have 950 people trying to rent them. And that gives you a 5% vacancy rate. That gives you a pretty stable housing. When you've got 1,050 people trying to rent 1,000 properties and the price just keeps going up year over year, the, the $20, it's not the $20 that worries me, the $20 extra per year. It's the, the $20 extra per month, the $200 extra per month that people are now paying in rent that they, than they were paying a few years ago, 100 times the problem. And, and, and I'm really torn with this because I want to see more affordable housing and I want to support the constituency groups that are listed in this, in, in the RCW. But I want us to fundamentally sit down and confront the source of the problem. Because if we just, if we just do another tax, it's not going to, it's, it's not going to change the problem for everybody else. And, and, and the people who can, can afford, and I say afford, that means they haven't been kicked out on the street, so they're somehow making ends. So they're somehow making ends meet. Those people, I'm not, I'm, again, it's not the extra twenty dollars I'm worried about, it's the fact that we don't do something fundamental. They're going to be paying an extra two hundred dollars a month within two or three years. And, and we cannot tax our way out of that problem.
Executive Sadeau?
Sorry, I think that it is true, Mr. Brown, that, that we cannot solve this problem with this miniscule tax or miniscule, miniscule thing, and this is not intended to. Now, just imagine that if, if we are able to, in, in next ten years, able to add another three to five thousand permanently affordable housing into the inventory. This is, this is not enough money to build all those, what I'm saying is this can incentivize to do that. You know how much impact that would be on our community? And this will not happen day one, like, everybody is saying, well, what is the solution? That show me the solution, if I can show you the solution today, then we won't be talking about it. We have to start, the journey starts with step number one. And, and another thing is, this is not a pie in sky. This has been tried and successfully. Not only us, like, when we read the articles, i- it looks nice, a suburb in Denver solved the housing problem. And we share that article with each other, but when it comes to your own community and then we, we find all the ways that it cannot be done. People who took these steps, they have done it. Now, other person, the question is taking it to the waters. I think it's a very genuine request and, and genuine way of thinking. But know what happens? If it passes by fifty-two people pass and forty-eight don't, then what do you do with that forty-eight people? Then it's okay? This is, this is, this is something that we, we have been elected to represent people. When we, we spend, we make decisions for millions of dollars in this council. Why we talk about if we take twenty dollars from you for a year, we need your permission. But if you gave the money and we spend hundred dollar of your money without asking you, how is that justified? We do it because we are represented, we feel that this is reasonable thing to do, reasonable expense to make, and we spend public money for the right causes. So I, I am very convinced that this is a good start. This is not the final solution to the housing problem we have. But if we don't do anything, it will get worse and it will get even more expensive. And we will look back at it and say, well, why didn't we do that? That's what we, I look back at ten years ago, why didn't they do something? And this should not only be done with the tax. I think all the things that making the permitting different, making more housing available, of buildable land available, there's a study already in action, which we should have in few months. Buildable lands of whole Watcom County already started on that. And I already started on EDI money to be used for affordable housing, which was not done before. But this cannot be that, make the whole picture complete and then you ask us for, 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 for any step to be taken. Yes, we will, we will take those steps and I'm fully convinced that this is the right thing to do. And that's what we get elected for, to do good for our community. Thank you.
Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, I, I'm concerned that we think the, the previous programs, that, to use the word successful, I think ignores the fact that in the period of time the previous programs have been enacted. The affordability of housing has significantly declined in Watcom County. Yes, we have increased the number of units available, I, I certainly agree with that and I applaud that. But the, but the, but the rate we have been adding units is far smaller than the rate of demand for those units. And the net result is, at the time we, as I understand it, if I'm trying to remember my dates correctly, at the time we enacted, Bellingham enacted the, the, the home fund, housing has probably gone up three to four hundred dollars per bedroom in that period of time, certainly three to four hundred dollars per apartment in that period of time. So it's not, it, it hasn't increased the affordability of it. The, if we take the, if we take, take the, the model of the, the two million dollars we collect, if we take two million dollars and we can leverage it by ten, that's twenty. If you take, say, two hundred and fifty as an example for a cost, that's eighty units we can build with effectively twenty million dollars. That twenty million dollars, if we did that as, as, um, uh, an LID for either Kai-Tech or for the property out near Blaine, we could probably bring on a thousand units. Or at least a thousand vacant lots that could have housing built on them, which would significantly impact the housing supply. So let's just make sure, I, I just want to make sure we understand what success means, because we're not being successful. We're just, we're, we're just not as badly off as we would have been if we'd done nothing.
Executive Sadeau?
Just, just one quick comment I want to make, the last twenty-five years, the, the general policy has been no growth is good. If you make it difficult to build, it will be good, then people won't build it, people won't come here. We cannot stop growth, we can only manage it. And this is, this is what, what, what we did twenty years ago caught up with us. And we, 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 we can find different reasons why we are not successful. We wanted to be not successful twenty years ago. Because that was the solution at that time taught was that, that was the solution. And this is how it turned out. I'm saying these things are long-term impacts. We can take small steps and build on those steps. And, and, and I think these are the genuine things to, to have more buildable lands to, to, to do permitting, even the wetlands bank. I have talked to the council a year ago that we should establish a five thousand acre wetlands bank, which is hamstringing us every place, everywhere. But if you say, go build a wetlands bank and then come back to us, that's not a solution. That's not how public things get done. We have seen it, we have seen in our lifetime. We have to take some steps and walk on that walk and, and, and stay focused, we will get it done. I, I'm very confident that, that this would make an impact. I'm not saying this will solve the problem. And Mr. Brown, you are totally right, that we have not caught up with the demand. But it didn't mean that Bellingham's done an excellent job, that they have so many units. At least there could have been five thousand people on the, on, on the streets today. And they're not, because steps have been taken.
Any further discussion on the motion? Councilmember Frazee?
I just want to say, I heard Councilmember Brown say not as badly off as if we did nothing. And I would rather be a little better and then add on to that with this. So we were not, not as badly off as if we did nothing.
Councilmember Brown?
Yeah. And I, I want us, I want us to have balance, I, I, I don't want my I, I want us to solve the problem, is what I want us to do and, and, and still, I feel like this is sort of nibbling around the edges when, I, I agree with Mr. Sadeau's comments. We have for twenty years, this, this community has basically had a no-growth policy, and this is the consequence of having no-growth policy. And you know, our children, you know, I, I moved down here because I loved it, it was a beautiful place to live. It was a great place to raise our kids, but my kids can't afford to live here. So, because we've had no growth, and so they're living somewhere else. I want us to solve the problem, I don't want us, I want us to really solve the problem, is what I'm saying.
Councilmember Donovan?
Okay, that's hard. So a no-growth policy, intensifying density and infill is not a no-growth policy. We have UGAs in Blaine that are just massively available for growth. We, we don't have a no-growth policy. And I don't know where your, your kids moved to lower-cost areas than this, that, that, that's, it's really frustrating to hear that. I'm sorry. It's, 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 it, we need, as I agree with you, we need, we need land capacity, we need to, we need the city annexing, we need to have infill, we did all of those things. But that doesn't necessarily lead to lower-cost housing and, and, and I don't know. Y'all, you know, family of lower-cost areas where they have different policies. This is a, this is a thing going on across the country and across different countries where the market is just not going to supply the kind of housing we're talking about here. So, you know, it's, it's not a no-growth policy.
Yes, Mr. Brown?
A UGA is not a developed area, a UGA is a future area to develop. And, and we've got, we've got a large, we've got several UGAs around the city of Bellingham. And we've got a large UGA out near Blaine, but they don't have the utilities. Because they don't have the utilities, there isn't going to be the growth out there. And the utilities have to be, it's a big spend, it's twenty to thirty million dollars to put in the utilities. And, and the developer's saying, I don't have the money. And the solution to that is the community steps forward and says, okay, we will fund an LID. We get paid back when you sell the properties. You know, it's not a gift to the developer, you, it comes off the price of the land when you sell it. But that will increase the land supply, which will mean that the, the, the supply gets closer to the demand and the prices will stabilize and that's the only way the market works. Is when the, with the supply and the demand get equal, the prices stabilize.
Yeah, no, and I, I agree with you, but that's not the housing we're talking about with this stuff here. And I, I totally agree with you.
If, if I may.
Go ahead.
Mr. Brown, what you're talking about is overall, suppose there are thousand units built by, by Kai-Tech. There will be thousand units of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars each. How would you solve this problem? We can, we can subsidize that, that five hundred and fifty thousand dollar house by giving the LID and everything, maybe five hundred and forty thousand dollars. They're not going to eat their profit, they're going to say we are making ten thousand dollar extra, we will get our money back. I, I agree with that. We fund them, they build the house cheaper, they sell at the market price, we get our money back, but how would you make a house for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? That's what we are trying to solve. And it may be only out of the thousand, if I get hundred homes at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we have done good for our community. We are trying to solve the problem for five hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes, we'll never be able to solve that. But that's where, that's where that money will go.
Councilmember Brown?
So historically, what happens in any community is if, if there is an adequate supply of housing for a segment of the market, in, in this case you're talking about that the, the market that would pay a half a million dollars. If there's inadequate supply of that type of housing, what happens? Because there's a lack of land to build it, what happens is people go and buy lower-cost housing. They tear it down, they evict the tenants and they replace it with a newer, an upgraded house. So that displaces the tenants. So at the end of the day, what you want is you, you want to balance with the number, of the number of doors with the number of people who want to walk through those doors. And if you don't have that balance, the people at the bottom get squeezed out, they just get driven out of the market. Because their houses get, their houses are worth more torn down and replaced with a new house than they are as a functional house. So you have to, if, if someone wants to buy that land and build that half a million dollar house, let them, because the pressure will come off the rest of the community.
Okay, I, I will stop here. I think you have a valid point, but the thing is, is that if those houses are permanently affordable and, and, and these, these kind of funds can also take that same land and build an affordable house. You can take three lots, make five out of that, build only fourteen hundred square feet homes, no more than that, or thousand to fourteen hundred square feet home, and they will, they will be affordable. And that's where this, this, this is going to solve. We are not, we cannot solve the market problem in this council or with this money. That is too small a money to, to make any difference. But you have a valid point though, for, for overall market. Yes, you have a valid point, but here we are discussing a small segment of people. Maybe ten percent. If we can achieve that, to me, we took a good bite of that elephant, the ten percent.
I guess, you know, for me, this, this is really great theorizing about all of these market factors and everything. I, I find it fascinating and I do agree with much of what Mr. Brown is saying. However, the fundamental question for me is, does voting no on this help the situation? I don't think it does. I think this is something that we have to, we really, really need to, to suck it up and pass this and, and build those types of units that Executive Sadeau is talking about.
I agree, but I still don't get the elephant thing.
Journey of a thousand steps starts with one, is that better?
I'll explain individually to you.
No, 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 no.
Mr. Brown?
Well, I don't want to talk about elephants because I don't think that's what we're talking about, and I'll tell you why. Two, two million dollars, just pick a number, if it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per dwelling, total cost. And you, and you raise twenty million dollars because you leverage it nine to one, which I accept. You end up generating eighty houses. That is one tenth of one percent of the number of houses in this community. It's not ten percent, it's not going to affect ten percent of the population. It's going to affect one tenth of one percent, ironically, probably pretty close to the percentage of the sales tax rate.
You're right, that's in one year, not take ten years. That's what I'm saying. This is not something you can solve in, it's going to take patience, it's going to take a, a pathway, that we continue on that pathway. With two million dollars, you leverage ten times, that's twenty million dollars. And, and this is how you keep doing that every year for next ten years. You know, that will make a difference in our community. That, that, you know, I
Councilmember Frazee?
Yes, and we say, you know, it'll help one tenth of one percent, so say it does help those eighty families. And then we combine something else and that helps another eighty families, then combine something else, like, again, the elephant. And unless we have this big idea where we're going to bring it in and change everything all at once, I think we just have to be bold and add a bunch of things together, starting with this. And so we can help those eighty people to start and then keep combining ideas and different ways of helping them.
Councilmember Brown?
You're going to be sick of me with the end of that, I'm sure, this I'm sure, but yeah, I, I know, you know, respectfully, we will help those eighty families and next year we'll help another eighty families. That's great. The problem is this year we'll have eight hundred families try and move in. And next year we'll have another eight hundred families try and move in. So we're not fundamentally dealing with the problem, we're just making it a little less bad. And I, all I want us to do is, is really step up and fundamentally deal with the problem. And that's my concern is we're, we're, we're somehow convincing ourselves that we're going to make a fundamental change. This is not going to make a fundamental change. And that's my concern. I'm not, I'm not convinced I'm going to vote against this, but I'm really frustrated that as a community, we're, we're not having the conversation we need to have about solving the problem.
Councilmember Frazee?
I just want to say, you know, with this tax and then any ideas Councilmember Brown brings forward, I think we consider everything that anything that's going to help the situation and help people with affordability, we're going to listen to. So let's start bringing those forward.
Any further discussion? Please call a roll.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
No.
Red Brown?
Reluctant, yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Enthusiastic, yes.
Tyler Bird?
Nope.
Todd Donovan?
Uh, yes. That passes four to three. Okay, let's. Let's move into our open session, uh, the open session is being held virtually tonight. I guess, let's go ahead and play that video again since we've, uh, it's been a while since we've had public testimony tonight, so. Go ahead and roll the video and show people how they can log in to be able to testify.
Welcome to the meeting, for instructions on how to join the meeting to speak, please visit welcomecounty.us/joinvirtualcouncil. Meeting information including Zoom meeting link, phone number, webinar or meeting ID. And password are available under the meeting date at the bottom of the page. Members of the public may join the meeting online or by phone. The meeting is broadcast live and recorded, all speakers will have three minutes. When you've joined the meeting, please virtually raise your hand to request to speak. To virtually raise your hand online, click the hand icon at the lower area of your screen. To virtually raise your hand by phone, dial star nine on your keypad. Council staff will call on you by the name listed, or if you're joining by phone, by the last three digits of the phone number from which you're calling. When called upon to speak, click the microphone icon to unmute, or if joining by phone, wait till you hear a message indicating the host unmuted your phone. Please first state your full name for the record, staff will announce when your three minute speaking time is up. Camera sharing will not be offered at this meeting, thank you for joining the meeting.
Okay, please call the first speaker.
The first speaker is Sharon Sharon Bosom. Followed by Serenity Outreach and Joy Gilfillan. Go ahead Sharon, please state your full name for the record, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Sharon Bosom, I've been, uh, listening to all the back and forth. Uh, this evening and also I listened in on. The City Council meeting last night and. My question for all of you in this county and and in the city of Bellingham is. Why is it that you cannot? Think outside of the box, I mean, if we keep doing what we've been doing, we'll keep getting what we've been getting. And and that is something that we need to move away from. Uh, we live in a different time and as it was mentioned by a few council members. You know, the the, everything is unknown at this point and. And as you you well know, uh, people are being forced out of the market. People who, uh, were born here, raised here, have gone to school here. Have their whole support system, they have been forced out of the market, whether it's to buy a house or to rent a place. And, um, and then, you know, like last night at the meeting, they were saying twenty one million dollars is coming into just Bellingham. I don't know how much the county is getting, but at least for Bellingham, twenty one million dollars. So before you make these decisions, you've got to come up with a. Solid plan, present it to the public. And and then get their feedback. Uh, I was very upset last night, the city council would not allow people to speak. They only had five people speak, you know, that was it. So I'm thankful that you're not doing that, but, um, we we live in a different time, it it had, things have to change. You know, you've got the fourteen oh six money coming in, you've got additional monies from the. Uh, latest COVID money coming in, I know not everything is going to housing. But the there is money out there, but there's also mismanagement of money. So I urge you to start looking elsewhere to figure out what else can be done besides just raising taxes every few years. Thank you.
The next speaker is listed as Serenity Outreach, go ahead, please state your full name for the record, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Louis Burrell and I'm speaking for myself as well as Serenity Outreach Services. And speaking tonight to encourage the County Council, the Waukesha Health Department and other organizations to. Continue supporting the efforts that are ongoing to find a reasonable and safe place for Waukesha County's homeless. One of the ways that I think our community has really rallied around and worked to support the homeless community is by. Inluding city council and county council. And by putting together networks of community activists to feed, clothe and look after these people. Where that community effort ends is where the government effort needs to step in. And I think one of the things that we're hoping to accomplish in the near term is to have the city and the county work together to provide. A safe location for these people to go to. We oftentimes fear that social workers or ID programs that are out there have a hard time locating clients. They have a hard time with following up with their clients. And that's understandable when your clients may not have a home address or a telephone number to be contacted at. One of the ways that I think our community as a whole, Waukesha County and and other cities can. Maybe mitigate that concern is by having our homeless in a safe location. Where social workers and outreach program folks can actually access these people. And so I invite the County Council and the Waukesha Health Department to look at the proposals and options that have. Been put in front of them and that will, um, new proposals will be put forth. Waukesha County Health Department is a big team player when it comes to combating. COVID nineteen and other sorts of issues that our community faces and so, uh, as someone that lives in Waukesha County. That appreciates the Waukesha County Council's work. Um, I would just hope that they would continue to encourage both the Health Department and the county to participate in these meetings and to do what they can. To help our homeless folks. Um, the Housing First Initiative is also great, but I think that we need to continue putting in for money and resources into outreach. I yield the rest of my time, thank you.
The next speaker is Joy Gilfillan, followed by the caller ending in phone number one nine nine and then we'll go to Marcus D. Joy, go ahead, please state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
My name is Joy Gilfillan, I'm with the Restorative Community Coalition and for the past eleven years, I've been studying. How in the world to turn our economics and our systems upside down because I am in, I've been a free enterprise person my entire life. And I've been involved in business and as a coalition. We've been studying how we are constantly, um, cutting and increasing costs in Waukesha County. And displacing free enterprise. And I'm not talking corporate businesses, I'm, I mean, big business, I'm talking free enterprise. We have absolutely gutted our lower class and we are harming. The people at the bottom of the poverty level, I can't tell you how many people that I saw when we did the home, that homeless sweep downtown. These are local people who can't make it in the market. I agree with you, Red, that we absolutely must solve the problem. I actually agree with every single one of you guys, which is really bizarre, but the reason I agree is because we must solve the problem. We actually need to do an emergency safety first needs assessment right now and we can do this in the county. I know I figured out how we can do it and I'm going to start doing it whether you guys are listening or not. Because we must survey the public. In a new free enterprise, how do we actually solve the problem, we are facing. Several years of destructive behavior and economic crisis. And the old systems and the old methods of doing the same kind of task forces and hiring the same kind of out outsourced contractors. Isn't going to solve the problem, we actually need. To bring in local citizens in a local, you know, public commission and we actually have to put all these problems on the table. And get every single jurisdiction working together. To come up with the next six month emergency management plan, the next, I mean, economic and living and housing and human safety. Emergency management plan, then we need an eighteen month plan. And then we need an economic plan for the next three years and I'm a hundred percent behind doing a project to solve the problem. And I really would love to participate, my coalition stands ready, willing and able, there are many, many ways to skin the cat, I'm not going to talk about elephants. We can cut costs, we can, we raising taxes isn't going to solve it because it's hurting the same people. We can do. Arrest fewer people and we can put people back to work, helping themselves and we can save ourselves money, get people off the street. And stop hurting each other, we've got to do it, it's it's time and it's now and we can, we've got brilliant people. And brilliant resources, but we have to be willing to bring them together and listen. Outside the box, get through the colored glasses, any colored glasses. And let's get. To solve the problem, I'm so grateful that I was on the call tonight, thanks.
The next speaker is the caller, phone number starting three six zero and ending in one nine nine, go ahead, please state your full name for the record, you have three minutes.
My name is Rainbow Madison Walker, I live in Kendall. Many counties, both conservative and liberal, have implemented temporary, all inclusive marijuana moratoriums. In order to review and upgrade their own ordinances. An interim moratorium does not affect existing or pending permits. It simply gives us time to reevaluate the situation without creating even more future problems. A moratorium is a recognized technique to avoid a rush for permits. Whenever a community decides to review its planning ordinances. Since our own marijuana ordinance review is on the docket. For all both indoor and outdoor marijuana production and processing facilities. It is consistent and logical to implement a temporary moratorium on new permitting. For all both indoor and outdoor facilities. So as to have consistent full protection for our communities while the code review is taking place. According to both State WAC and Waukesha County ordinance. There is a very large overlap in definitions between outdoor and indoor operations. In other words, it is difficult to tell the difference between them. Both types of operations use greenhouses and the difference between those greenhouses is negligible. Therefore, to limit this moratorium to only outdoor operations. Under the current rather vague ordinance definitions. Appears to me ineffective and completely non protective. To say that this request for a moratorium must mean that we do not like marijuana. Is similar to saying that we must not like beer just because we do not want an ever expanding Budweiser factory. Moving in right next door into our rural residential community. If the county wants Budweiser factories, I E. industrial scale cannabis operations. Then fine, just put them in the appropriate industrial zones where they can be better regulated and do not negatively impact surrounding neighborhoods. The Planning Department continues to place large, ever expanding industrial scale cannabis operations into our rural residential zones. When we have vigorously protested this inappropriate placement, the Planning Department has told us. They must keep on granting these permits because the codes require it. So we have come to the council for help in dealing with this intolerable situation. Because we have been told by every relevant state agency that it is up to the county to regulate through county ordinance. We need this moratorium urgently because under the current codes. It can take two months or less with help from the Planning Department for a large cannabis operation to get up and running. In our rural areas, which would then be grandfathered in before a code review can take place, thank you.
The next speaker is Marcus D. and then we'll go to Doug Yoshi, Eliza Steele and H K. Mobile. Go ahead Marcus, please state your full name for the record, you have three minutes.
Hello, I'm Marcus D. Stidham, I'm the Homeless Strategies Work Group's homeless advocate there. That's, it's my honor to sit in that position and be advisor to county council, I spoke earlier. A little bit about the health hazards and of and and the insanity of of torturing these people in this pandemic. I I, so I bring it, I bring us back, I'm sorry to say, to the elephant in the room, had to guys, sorry. But here we are, this this group does need to be served, now that, now that we've just talked about passing this. This tax then and it's and and it's destined for housing, so it is also on the city's end and their tax. Again, as I spoke earlier, nothing that, all all resources are drying up to the people who are at the very bottom. I mean, there's no budget been cut for them, but there's nothing been added. And the systems that don't work aren't going to automatically work because you add more money to them. But in fact, there's no, there's, there's no provisions being made, there's not, there's nothing for for the bottom level of entry of homelessness or. I should say, you fall down to that level overnight in this town because there's nothing to catch you. You you literally go with a backpack out of your apartment, say, and and say to yourself, well, I've given to the lighthouse mission before, so I will take advantage of those services. And by morning you could end up. With nothing, with no name, no I D, no nothing, you so it just happens that way in this town. It's not about the mission, okay, we've got to do so much better. So now you've got this tax passed and 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 that's, and you know, the city's intent to. That maybe we should really focus with our emergency dollars during this COVID emergency, during this pandemic emergency, what emergency dollars we have. On on buying the shelters, as you've heard me said, say ad nauseam, you've heard me pitch the 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 four square. Uh, the the four square proposal to you on on housing up to a hundred people in in safe groups and rather of a sorting hat. Of the the triage area so that we can get people services and get them sent off to the right places where they need to go. Yes, we need money for for them, for the places for them to go. But we can't leave behind the these people, we don't leave people to die on our streets, right, we won't do that, right? We don't, we don't chase them around in our streets with our constabulary, right, we just don't do that, right? We got to come to some agreement together. I'm so proud to be a part of S O S Bellingham, Serenity Outreach Services, it's so great to be running with with people like Louis Burrell, who you heard speak, or what a, what a great, what a great man. We are agile, we're full of great ideas, we're boots on the ground, we know this population. This, these are our people, these are my longtime clients and you know it. I've 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 done a lot in this town for what, and and it. It has a much bespangled record, whatever you want to call it, it's all been good, look again. I'm here to work with you right now, this group is willing to work with you and wanting to partner with you to come up with real solutions together. For the next decades, let's do it together, please, join us.
The next speaker is Doug Yoshi, go ahead Doug, state your name for the full, your full name for the record and you have three minutes.
Thank you, my name is Doug Revel, my nickname is Yoshi. Thank you, members of public and staff, members of the County Council and Mr. County Executive for your attention. There was a shooting in Atlanta. Last week where eight people died. And I'm grateful that a number of people have come out to protest against, uh, violence against Asians. Also against violence against women and the, uh, easy accessibility to, uh, guns. Uh, my understanding is the gunman bought the gun the same day that that he did the shooting and that's. It's unconscionable to me that we don't have, uh, some sort of pause so that there's a. Some time for the the person to cool down, uh, instead of having the gun almost immediately. Uh, but the thing that I'm really concerned about is the gun person, the gunman. Mentioned sex addiction. And in many quarters, uh, this idea was poo poo, that something like, uh, sex addiction could could lead to this type of violence. Sex addiction is a real thing. There is great suffering and violence and yes, death associated with it. Uh, the D S M five doesn't list, uh, sex addiction as a mental illness. Because it it uses a different word and the word is paraphilia. P A R A P H I L I A. Sex addiction, paraphilia, and if somebody is, uh, more religiously oriented lust. We're all, we're talking about the same thing, it is a real problem, there is suffering associated with it, there is violence associated with it, there is death associated with it. I'm speaking from, uh, personal experience, I'm a survivor of sexual trauma. And it is very disturbing to me that, uh, this I, this. The idea that this kind of violence could be associated with something like sex addiction or paraphilia or lust or whatever one wants to call it. Is being swept under the rug. Uh, we need to speak openly about this, that there is a real thing called sex addiction, there is a real thing called paraphilia. There is a real problem with lust, there is suffering and violence and death and death associated with it. And we need to to talk more openly about it as well as solutions, how do we deal with it? How do we prevent these kinds of things? How do we prevent these kinds of things from happening and the other suffering and violence and death that happens is kind of off the radar? I thank you all for giving me time to talk with you about this and I wish you all a pleasant evening. Thank you.
The next speaker is Eliza Steele. Go ahead, Eliza. Please state your full name for the record. You have three minutes.
I would like to introduce myself as Eliza Steele, a resident of Wacom County, an owner of a historical farm on Mount Baker Highway. I was aware of the marijuana grow across the street when purchasing and was comfortable with it being just a growing operation at the legal capacity it is at, which is 30,000 square feet plant canopy or a tier three grow. Upon hearing of an administrative use permit being proposed to expand the operation, I started to look into the project more since I have experience as a permit consultant in King County for 10 years. Seeing the level of the project proposed, I didn't worry too much and trusted that the planning department would be having extensive reviews done in collaboration with other institutions to make sure the environment and adjacent community were protected. I was absolutely and utterly shocked when it was revealed how little oversight was happening and requesting input from the other institutions, Department of Ecology, Fish and Wildlife, et cetera. After reviewing the marijuana ordinance of Wacom County, it was revealed that the current codes are not protective enough for the adjacent community businesses and the environment. Looking into this matter further, it has also become apparent that this is happening to citizens in other locations around Wacom County as well. In connecting with a Ferndale resident who told me about what he has been going through for the last three years, I was again deeply shocked by the negligence of Wacom Planning Department's lack of enforcing what was required for the approval of the permit for the large marijuana facility. The main issues that have not been enforced are light pollution at night from the greenhouses, water usage, and incredibly strong odor that come from the facility when the greenhouses need to be opened up in the heat. The planning department had in-person meetings with this community about this and nothing has been done still to this day. What they have been experiencing is what happens when a large-scale corporation is allowed to come in and build an industrial-sized complex for product growing and production in rural residential communities. This is already happening with the tier three grow across the street for me since there is currently no enforcement happening with current code violations, building without permits, light pollution, and the company is growing way over their legal limits. How can there be an expectation of the current non-effective ordinance being abided by if it's already not happening in other areas of the county? After having conversations with Wacom PDS, it has become apparent that they're, they will only go exactly by the code and that and this is where the issue lies in that the codes are not adequate in protecting the rural communities, but rather are supportive for the marijuana industry to be able to set up their facilities anywhere in the rural areas in inappropriate locations. This should not be allowed and the codes need to be immediately addressed with a moratorium for both indoor and outdoor marijuana facilities to stop this rapidly expanding industry from continually expanding in rural communities. The moratorium will protect the marijuana companies getting permits submitted to get quote unquote vested before the codes get addressed on the 2021 docket. This is a zoning issue as well for both indoor and outdoor since tier three marijuana facilities are industrial-growing complexes that create light and odor pollution that is a disruptive nuisance to the local communities and businesses.
Eliza, your time is up. Thank you. The next speaker is HK Mobile. Go ahead, please state your full name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi, is it my time?
Yes, go, go ahead, please, Heather.
Heather Katadin. Hi, council member and neighbors. I give thanks for these lands and waters that we continue to steward together as community. I am thankful it's springtime and time to plant seeds and to cultivate our farm and gardens. And I'm aware not every neighbor has access to computers and wifi to listen or provide public comment. I appreciate each voice that has spoken earlier. My comment tonight is to encourage our county to think and act a bit out of the box and to facilitate the creation of multiple low-cost tiny home villages and towards the creation of safe transitional load and bid encampment. May we develop partnerships with either our low-cost local nonprofits or with behavioral health agencies as many of their clients are not being served, especially their clients who live outside and live without a safe home or family. I encourage funding to go towards prioritizing both any children experiencing homelessness and towards funding for outreach to our most vulnerable citizens, many who are elders and many who are managing alone, multiple medical illnesses, living in either vehicles, tents, rustic cabins without power or wifi, and many of our unsheltered are also working citizens and are receiving wages too low to afford rentals. Our community works hard at our jobs and we are aware of how our taxes are spent. Some of us are aware of the high costs of group congregate shelters and the high cost of hotels being used to shelter some families. And we are aware of the low cost of transitional housing tiny home models, locally working models such as our community's two homes now, Tiny Home Villages, Unity Village and Swift Haven. Our community is aware it is possible for the county, our cities, our portlands to create new pathways, new zoning and regulations for more citizens to be housed in low-cost homes such as Tiny Home Villages on shared land. Many of our neighbors who are living outside are not able to care for their health, to cook meals or to fall asleep or experience safety inside a crowded indoor group congregate setting such as space camp. And many of our unsheltered citizens are not criminals. And I find it very disrespectful and untruthful to hear at past meetings for a tax-funded staff member to imply publicly that persons who are homeless are criminals or that they have chosen to be without safe housing. That is in false and incomplete data. Thank you so much for your time. If I have more time, I'll continue.
We'll go to our next speaker. Thank you, Heather. Our next speaker is Holly Kuhn. Go ahead, Holly. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Executive CDO and members of the county council. For the record, my name is Holly Kuhn and I am a resident of Maple Falls in Swatcombe County. And I am here this evening to talk to you about the ordinance that you are going to that will be brought forward later this evening for an interim moratorium on the acceptance and processing of new applications and permits for outdoor recreational cannabis growing. And I, I don't think I'm going to use my whole three minutes, but I I just wanted to speak to you tonight because I'm I I thought I would be speaking tonight simply to thank you for your speedy action on this issue. But I, when I read the proposed moratorium, I was really disappointed to see outdoor marijuana growing operations being the only type of growing operation that's being considered in this moratorium. And the issue for me is that there's pretty large issues with both kinds of operations. And these issues aren't just occurring in Wacom County. They're not just occurring in my neighborhood. These are issues that have been dealt with by counties all around the state. And the big issue is, is that sometimes it's pretty hard to tell the difference between indoor and outdoor growing operations unless they are clearly defined in ordinance. Some indoor operations, for example, are indoor until they pull the top off the greenhouse in the hot part of the summer. So I'm here to ask you, when you get to that part of your agenda, if someone would consider an amendment to add, or actually just to strike the words outdoor from this moratorium. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is a caller with the phone number beginning in three six zero, ending in seven nine eight. And then we'll go to Krista Rome and Todd Baker. Go ahead, caller ending in seven nine eight. Please state your full name for the record and you have three minutes.
Allison Calder, Point Roberts. I'm calling tonight to speak about a memo that was sent to council and the executive by the PRCAC. In the memo, it was a request for the accounting for the solid waste transfer station lease, specifically requesting the county's confirmation as soon as feasible that the current and/or future lease rate is equivalent to the lease rate for Cedarville and Birch Bay Transfer Stations. In this afternoon's meeting, Mr. Wolpers noted that the reason the lease was $700 more than both Cedarville and Birch Bay was to pay for improvements by the previous leaseholder. In 2010, Wacom County signed an agreement for $112,191 for lease improvements with the prior leaseholder. The $700 was supposed to help reimburse the county for those leaseholds improvements, which are owned by Wacom County. Based on the accounting, it would take approximately an additional 28 months to cover the entire leasehold improvements. I would personally request that this evening council only approve the lease at the current rate of $750 for two years, which would give us an expiry of 2023, which is at the same time of the Cedarville and Birch Bay lease renewals. And that at that time, council would make sure that the lease rates between Point Roberts, Cedarville and Birch Bay are in equivalence. Thank you.
The next speaker is Krista Rome. Go ahead, please. State your full name for the record. You have three minutes.
Can you hear me all right?
I can hear you softly. I don't know if you can speak more directly into your microphone.
Let me just try. Is this better?
We can hear you, but it's quiet.
I can hear.
I will speak loud. This is Krista Rome calling from Ferndale. And I was just inspired to speak after listening to the conversation amongst the council members about the housing tax. And I just wanted to say that even though I noticed that the vote was made basically along partisan lines, I really appreciated the conversation that was had. I thought every single one of you had really good, important points. And I hope that this conversation can continue in more depth in the future and with some more thinking outside of the box. I I thought it might be a good time to remind you all that a while back I I emailed a copy of my personal zoning variance proposal, which was was specifically written from a small farmer land access perspective, but has a lot of approaches in it that I think are universal and can apply to our housing affordability in general. My, my intent with that was to notice that our, our approach with single-family housing, only one zoned on a 40-acre farm parcel does not allow multiple unrelated people to collaborate with their finances and with land stewardship. So I noticed that there's not a lot of limits on how large a single-family home can be, how big a septic system, how large a driveway unless there's critical areas impacts. And why wouldn't we be able to have, say, four small clustered cottages for single people or unrelated people to pool their finances, have homeownership and co-steward farmland with with less or equal environmental impact to a, say, a, you know, 5,000-square-foot, three-generation, 10-person house with, you know, a number of cars and a big driveway. So I don't know if what we can do around the Growth Management Act, but I would love it if you could look more into into how we could allow more of that on farmland and and for other housing. And in addition, requiring things like a deed restriction for permanent affordability, making it be homeownership and not just rentals. Deed restrictions are used by, like, the Colson Land Trust. When we give a fee break to the developer, that does nothing to make sure it stays affordable once that original purchaser sells the home. So I think those are really important elements and I I thank you for your time and I will, I will email that to you again. I know that you don't get to all your emails. Thank you.
The next speaker is Todd Baker. And if anyone else would like to speak after Todd Baker, please raise your hand virtually by clicking the hand icon on the lower area of your screen or dialing star nine if you're joining by phone. Go ahead, Todd. Please state your full name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi there. My name is Todd Baker and I live up in the Kendall Deming area. And I appreciate you hearing us all out tonight for the various topics. Thank you, council. I appreciate your time and I'm speaking tonight in also in favor of a moratorium on the indoor and outdoor marijuana grows. I'm not really sure the difference between indoor and outdoor anymore. I'm kind of confused. And I'm kind of confused in the terminology. It's, you know, it's not considered agriculture by the city, by the state of Washington. But there are local farms, quote-unquote farms, that are being allowed to be placed in rural communities and considered agriculture when they're not. And so I'm confused about that terminology as well. So I've also heard people say that that the neighbors are just, you know, concerned about one bad actor and and that kind of thing. And it's, yeah, it's one bad actor that made us think about a lot of these issues. And then after talking to the planning department and realizing that there's not enough oversight and not enough regulations and not enough coordination with other agencies to even begin to establish these rules, just let the the bad actors, as you will, or or new people come in and just do whatever they want to do and ask for forgiveness later on. I think that's a horrible way to manage these things. And I think if we just had a moratorium and we could step back. I'm pro marijuana. I'm, you know, I would love to see these things succeed and but there needs to be some oversight, some regulation and there's environmental concerns, there's light and odor pollution, there's, you know, a ton of things that that everybody is concerned with as well as our community and our, our look of our community and especially, you know, up here in the foothills where it's you know, a scenic byway or, you know, what have you. And I really think that a moratorium is needed now and I don't think we can wait and just let people build and ask for forgiveness later on. It's not going to work that way. And I think that since it's not considered agriculture and it's more industrial, I think it's a better location somewhere else in an industrial area. And I don't want to shut down anybody that's existing now, but I think we need to take a look at it and really think about it. I appreciate you giving us the time and I really hope that that you'll listen to us. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Natalie Chavez and then we'll go to the caller with the number beginning in three six zero and ending in six five zero. So go ahead, Natalie. Please state your full name for the record. You have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Natalie Chavez and I've lived in Bellingham for approximately 16 years. I want to speak tonight regarding SARS-CoV-2, the COVID-19 novel coronavirus. After the last 12 months, I'm hoping that members of the Wacom County Council are beginning to investigate this COVID catastrophe and starting to ask the Wacom County Health Department some critical questions regarding COVID, effective COVID treatments and the COVID PCR tests that are being administered here. These critical questions are long overdue and much needed. German Corruption Trial Attorney Renner Foma, who is also, was also admitted into the bar in California over 20 years ago, created a German Corona Investigative Committee based in Berlin with other attorneys in July 2020. It is unfortunate that we didn't transition the Wacom COVID Task Force here into the Wacom COVID Investigative Committee. here into the Waukesha COVID Investigative Committee, as I am sure that we would have had a completely different outcome than what we currently have today. An outcome for our community members that would have been different at every level for them physically, emotionally, mentally, and spiritually. I have seen no transparency whatsoever in regard to specific statistics, data, or scientific evidence given by the Waukesha County Health Department to back any of their guidelines or recommendations for our community. The deaths from respiratory illnesses in Waukesha County so far from this season and last season don't look much different from prior years, and we may even have a decrease in the Waukesha County overall mortality rate in 2020 than prior years. And so I ask, why haven't you asked these and other critical questions regarding COVID to the Waukesha County Health Department? And why have they not posted on their website whether or not this specific virus has even been isolated or purified yet? And why does it seem like no one at the Waukesha County Health Department, including Dr. Greg Stern, seemed to know much about the COVID test, the PCR test that is being used in Waukesha County? These are basic questions that our community deserves answers to. Does the Waukesha County Health Department know that the PCR test was never meant to be a diagnostic test or that does not diagnose infections? Carrie Mullis, the person who developed the PCR test, although now deceased, prior to his death, he stated in a recorded interview that the PCR test was not designed to diagnose infections. Carrie said that anyone can test positive for practically anything with a PCR test if you run it long enough or with a high cycle threshold. In other words, the PCR test does not tell us whether a person is sick or not. Virologist Juliette Morrison, PhD of UC Riverside, believes that any cycle threshold over 35 is too sensitive, and it sounds like the COVID PCR tests in Waukesha County are running at a 37-cycle threshold. In a January 19, 2021 New York Times article, it states, "The CDC's own calculations suggest that it is extremely difficult to detect any live virus in a sample above a threshold of 33 cycles." And during a podcast months ago, Dr. Fauci also admitted a concern with the cycle threshold used in PCR tests. At 35 cycles or higher, the chance of the PCR test being accurate is minuscule. Dr. Fauci also said that patients who test positive are not usually told the cycle threshold that their PCR test was running at. Now, that is very interesting information. So are there people in our community, children and whole classes at different public schools, employees and other adults in our community, being told to quarantine and isolate at home for 10 to 14 days for no reason at all? And the COVID-positive case rates has led to Waukesha County shutdowns, which affected schools, curfews, increase in homelessness, bankruptcies, destroyed lives and livelihoods, and deaths of despair. We need some answers to these critical questions. Thank you.
The next speaker is the caller and the phone number beginning 360, ending in 650. Go ahead, please, and state your full name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Misty Flowers. Thank you, council members, for letting us speak this evening. It's clear to everybody at this point that we have a housing issue. I'm a Waukesha County resident who lost my career and my part-time job due to the emergency orders and mask mandates. With two children and zero savings left, you can imagine how tricky it's been to keep a roof over our heads this last year. It's also clear that we no longer are in a state of emergency, especially in Waukesha County, in regards to COVID data. The data I'm referring to is testing data. The COVID PCR tests are still being ran at too high cycles to be accurate. Our hospitalization and death data show there's no longer an emergency that would warrant these business and school restrictions. COVID treatment options are available, yet the EUA COVID vaccines are being promoted and pushed through the Bellingham School District. I found that absolutely abhorrent. While you're debating on whether you're going to create a new tax, I'm still waiting for you to end the emergency orders so I can work again and keep from becoming homeless with my children. Because of these mask mandates, I cannot work a regular job until it ends because I cannot wear a mask without risking my health and life. Why do you continue to keep some occupations restricted, suppressing already struggling families when you comfortably decide when and how we reopen and how you'll eventually get a tax to pay for housing problems? Small businesses are collapsing under restrictions while large corporations continue to thrive. These mandates are unconstitutional and destroying our local economy. Please work with Sheriff Elfo and Sat Paul Sadu, the two public officials who can end emergency orders today. Thank you. You all have made an oath to protect our constitutional rights to life and liberty. All lives and livelihoods matter, even those of us still falling through these never-ending cracks, which is called the COVID emergency orders. Please act today. Thank you for your time.
If anyone else would like to speak during the open session, please raise your hand virtually by clicking the hand icon at the lower area of your screen. Or if you're joining by phone, you can dial *9 on your keypad. It looks like we have one additional speaker, Susan Winagel. Susan, were you trying to raise your hand? Can you unmute and let us know if you'd like to speak during the open session?
Yes, this is Susan Winagel. I would like to speak. Thank you.
Go ahead, please.
My name is Susan Winagel. Okay. My name is Susan Winagel, for the record. I live at 6326 Mount Baker Highway. And I just would like to say thank you for considering a moratorium on marijuana grows. I would like you to consider both indoor and outdoor operations as there's just too vague a ruling as to what they are in their definitions. There's just too much crossover in the rules and regulations, and our planning department is doing no enforcement of existing codes that are there. So I think it's time that we just take a stop, look at what we're doing, and then move forward after we've had some time to consider. So as you guys discuss things this evening, would you please consider some of the following questions? What are the differences between indoor and outdoor operations? And how do we differentiate them? What does Waukesha County want to protect in rural areas? Why do people live in rural areas? Why hasn't Waukesha County protected rural areas when Skagit and other surrounding counties have developed clear codes for marijuana operations, both indoor and outdoor? Why doesn't our planning department enforce the existing few codes we do have? Why, in four years, when several complaints over three years have been submitted, has there been no enforcement? Where should Tier 3 operations be located? What public notice is needed to give to neighbors before a Tier 3 operation is allowed? Why isn't Waukesha doing a moratorium to stop future operations from investing? Is there a good reason? And if so, what is the reason? Please consider these questions in your discussion. Please consider Tier 3 placements in industrial, commercial areas where water can be metered, where light pollution is the norm, not the exception, where odor and other violations can be enforced, where environmental concerns can be addressed instead of basically blatantly for the Tier 3 operation on Mount Baker Highway, completely ignored by the planning department, until many people complained. Please move forward with a moratorium so that codes can be addressed and implemented. Please stop fast-tracking marijuana operations without code enforcement. Thank you.
The next speaker is Melissa Weisner. Go ahead, Melissa. You have three minutes. Please state your full name for the record.
Hello, my name is Melissa Gray, Megan Weisner. I am the Executive Director of SOS, the Recovery and Outreach Services in Bellingham. We have introduced ourselves with a letter of consent to everyone, and we also have been working lately on a locker program by Storage Outreach and Locker Services via a locker truck and storage facility. So with lockers in hand, we have done, we have several field nights where we can outreach deals with various people. And we have a few people that are in hotels right now. And what I'm seeing is that the Orca Hotel is up for grabs and also the Morning Glory they want to sell. I could put my most functional people in Orca, because they have kitchenettes. And I could put my last functional, like, the lady who's taking care of right now needs surgery and has several autoimmune disorders and physical problems and is elderly. I could put people like her and put my more mentally unstable people in a more supervised setting in the Morning Glory with the proper staffing. So I would really love you guys to consider that $2 million stimulus package that Biden just passed down in CARE dollars. CARE dollars should be used for the cares of our unfortunate and our most compromised out there. These are also the people that will be the last to receive vaccinations. So they will be the most susceptible and the most contagious potentially. Not, not sperm, but it's one of those cases where, you know, if we have a proper place to put everyone, we monitor and get them to take care of anybody like one that I have now. Well, actually, I have three or four that actually need surgery. Did you know you can't get surgery if you don't have a place to live? So you just go out there and suffer until you die? I didn't know that. I know that now because I can take care of them, you know, to the medical professionals that they need. I'm going to need some of that CARE money, and I'm really going to need you guys to put in for some dues so that I can take care of these people better. Thank you very, very much. You really ought to consider this. Sat Paul, I saw that meme about abandoned malls. So we have abandoned hotels. Let's make that happen. I want to work on that with you. All right? Let's do this. You guys have a great night. Thank you for listening. Please support us and please help us out. We'd really like to help you help us with all this community. You guys have a great night. Thank you so much.
If anyone else would like to speak during open session, please raise your hand virtually by clicking the hand icon on your screen or dialing *9 if you're joining by phone. The next speaker is listed as Gwen and Bill. Go ahead, please, and state your full name for the record. You have three minutes. Gwen and Bill, go ahead, please. Unmute your microphone. You have three minutes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, please state your full name for the.
I'm Gwen Garrett, and thank you for hearing me out tonight. I drive nine miles to work, and I pass four grow-ups in that distance. Two of these grow-ups are within 3,000 feet of my home. The one is a small, law-abiding one, and it follows the rules. It's respectful of our neighborhood and of the environment. The other acts like a Colombian drug lord or a drug addict that does whatever it wants. It lies, it bullies, and manipulates, and no one is there to stop them or to make them account for their actions. And when I think about this, it's like, what are we supposed to do? The air stinks in my home. The noise from that place, the light. We sleep outside during the summer. And now we're finding out that they're going to have all these lights. They said that they were going to cover those greenhouses. And yet, the other morning, what are we looking at? We're looking at the sky all lit up from their one greenhouse. And it's like, who gave these people the power to do this? You guys really need to put a moratorium on all these grow-ups until you have this figured out, and you can protect our communities and the environment. Thank you for hearing me out.
If anyone else would like to speak, please raise your hand virtually. You can do that by clicking the hand icon on your screen or dialing 9 if you're joining by phone. *9 if you're joining by phone. There are no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. We will close the public open session, and we will move into finance and the consent agenda. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Waukesha County Finance and Administrative Services meeting met this afternoon, and we considered seven items on the consent agenda. These are items 1 through 7. They all received a majority of vote, and I so move.
Okay, I have a note here that says number 2 is withdrawn.
Ah, I stand corrected. You are correct. It's items 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7.
Okay, okay, we have that motion, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Sorry, Barry, point of order. Rod, you have the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yeah, this is the fire district number 7 item. I did, and I voted against that item.
I said they received a majority vote. They received a unanimous.
Okay, your correction. My apologies. They, I'd like to move to have that item polled then and voted on separately, please.
That's a decision for the chair.
We can do that without a motion. I would, I encourage all council members to want to do that, that we will allow it.
All right, well, let me withdraw my motion. And then the motion now stands as items 1, 4, 5, 6, and 7. These items received unanimous vote, and I so move.
Okay, we have that motion. Any discussion on that? Okay, please call the roll.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kershner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
If we're not, yeah.
Okay, that passes 7-0.
Next item up is AB 2021-157, Request Authorization for the County Executive to Enter an Interlocal Amendment Between Waukesha County and Fire Protection District Number 7 to Extend the Agreement Through December 31, 2022 in the Amount of $296,995. This received a vote of 2-0, and I so move.
Okay, discussion on this motion. Councilmember Berg?
Thanks. I mentioned this in committee a little bit, but for those who don't have kind of a reference for this item or where we're at with paramedics in our county, in the past, we passed the MT tax so that we could hire an additional paramedic team, bring them in. And that's been going on for a couple of years. We still don't have that team. But the message that we've been kind of communicating is that we're in such dire need of paramedics in our community that we need to implement our own paramedic training program. And at a meeting for this that I attended a couple of weeks ago, it was interesting to me because when they gave comparables that other counties in Washington State and what they were doing, the majority, well, actually, every single one of them was using a community college or a technical college to fulfill that need. And the cost of that program was $10,000 to $15,000 a year for that student to go through. And yet, our program is over $200,000 that we're paying. And the reason for that, we're told, is because we need paramedics so badly that we have to train them internally ourselves, and it's worth the cost and the expense in order to get them. And yet, we have one paramedic here that we're paying $200,000 a year to in salary, and we're putting them not on that duty that we needed so badly for, but in another place, we're asking them to attend meetings for individuals who are calling in to 911 too often for the wrong reasons. And to me, I would much rather see that money be used for that paramedic to go where they need to be and where we really need them, and that $200,000 to be used to hire people who have a specialized training and a time but aren't as limited and rare as a paramedic is. And it seems like we could hire at least two nurses full-time for the cost of a single paramedic, double the capacity for this program, while also increasing the number of paramedics that we have if we just went a little bit of a different route here. And so I'm voting no against this. I'm hoping the rest of you will vote no against this as well and support reallocating these funds so that we can get more resources into this program and to get more paramedics into our paramedic program.
Other discussion? Mr. Ellenboss, I see your hand. Other discussion, Mr. Ellenboss, I see your hand. Yeah, what 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 AB number is this? Is this one fifty seven? Yes.
Okay, good.
Other discussion? Councilmember Donovan?
I'm just saying, um.
You're in slow mo.
Okay, enter.
Are you sorry, Mr. Donovan, are you there?
Yeah, I'm voting, yeah. Could you hear that? I'll reboot here, but like I'm voting yes.
That's that's much better. Whatever you did, it fixed it. Any any further discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Kathy Kerschner?
No.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
No.
Todd Donovan? Councilmember Donovan Donovan, can you say that again, please?
Maybe you could do a voice text and Barry, Barry could play it.
Uh, Mr. Don, can you turn your camera on and give us a thumbs up or down?
I'll give Councilmember Donovan just a minute and I'll come back and I'll go to Ben Ellenboss, please.
Yes, hopefully you got that. Audio. Take audio off. It's a yes. Do you get that?
Yes, we got it that time.
Thank you. Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Did Ben vote? I didn't think so.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Okay, so that passes five to two.
You got me as a yes?
Yes, we got you as a yes, Todd. Okay, Mr. Brown, other items from finance?
I I'm I'm not sure I'm game to bring up anything else. I just hope Mr. Donovan is not giving his lectures on this on this internet connection.
Um.
Rural internet here.
We're making Ben's internet look pretty good. Okay, next item up was AB twenty twenty one dash one one zero request authorization to the county executive. To enter into a contract amendment between Watkin County and Freedom Two Thousand LLC DBA. Can do recycling and disposal to lease the Johnson Road Transfer Station facility in Point Roberts any amount of seven hundred fifty dollars per month. This received a vote of two zero and I so move.
Okay, we have that motion discussion. Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, there was a request to change this to, I think, twenty eight months. But I pointed out that the person making the quest request is not the person paying for it. As I understand, the person paying for it is quite happy with the current arrangement, and so I see no reason to modify.
Mr. Ellenboss?
Yeah, I I just wanted to point out that I think Councilmember Bird in subcommittee asked the question. That was proposed by the who was it? The PRCAC. About the differences between the transfer for the bird trade and whatever else. And does anybody remember exactly what the answer was? It had something to do with uh something to do with a previous investment. That was then being honored by this seven hundred fifty dollar amount or am I not getting that correct?
Councilmember Berg?
Yeah, the previous owner needed infrastructure improvements and so he ended up, I believe, suing over that. And in the settlement, we agreed to essentially make those infrastructure improvements and pay for them upfront. But in turn, increase his rent month over month. So instead of paying the fifty dollars that the other providers pay, he's going to pay the seven fifty. And that additional seven dollars per month in cash flow is meant to cover the upfront capital expenditures the county did on his behalf.
Further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
No.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
No.
That passes four, three.
Okay, the next item up is AB twenty twenty one dash one four five and ordinance amending the project budget. The Academy Road Stormwater Improvements Fund request number two. This received a vote of three zero and I so move.
Discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
That passes seven zero.
Next item up is AB twenty twenty one dash one four six. Ordinance amending the twenty twenty one Watkin County Budget Request Number Four in the amount of three million three hundred ninety seven thousand nine hundred and three dollars. This received a vote of three zero and I so move.
Discussion on this motion. Councilmember Frazee?
Yes, I just want to bring up I most likely am voting yes on this because of the other items. But the it's coming up again with the indoor gun range plantation. I'm not sure how many people are aware that the county does own the gun, well, does own the gun range. And we leased the land, I believe, and it continues to gradually lose money. And. And we the HVAC and roof repair has increased. The prices increased. And I guess I just want people aware that we are one of two counties in Washington State that does run a gun range. And it continues to lose, not as much as I said earlier, I'm not sure of the exact amount. But each year we are subsidizing a little bit and just want to make people aware of that. But I will be voting yes because. It needs to be done right now and all of the other items on the supplemental budget are important. But just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention.
Other discussion? Mr. Ellenboss?
I would just like to point out that there's three million three hundred and ninety seven thousand nine hundred and three dollars here. And things range from. PDR Support Services for Agricultural Conservation Easyments to. One million dollars for the Opportunity Council. To the ninety three thousand dollars for the sheriff to fund fiscal year eighteen Operation Stone Garden Program. Another thirty three thousand dollars for planning and development services and on and on and on. I think you get my point. I can't vote yes on one of these things and no on another one of these things. I gotta either vote yes or no. Fundamentally, on the whole package, and I have a problem with that. I think Carol's seeing what I've been talking about for a year and a half now. Because I don't think she wants to vote yes on some of this either. But she has to vote yes on stuff she doesn't like because it's all brought forward together.
Other discussion? Councilmember Bird?
Thanks. Yeah, I want to also just for the record and for individuals interested. The county owns almost roughly forty different parks and recs facilities across the entire county. A plantation is one of the most profitable that we have, if not the most profitable. As not in that it generates a profit, but it generates more revenue towards its cost than pretty much any other facility that we have. The in our facilities range from campsites to the gun range to boating facilities, to oceanfront hiking trails. The whole nine yards. So we have a number of different options that are out there that we've created for community members. So the fact that it's paying this much, it might be losing a little bit of money, but in comparison to everything else, the fact that it covers this much of its expense, I think, is. Is very beneficial to us in the long run. I also would like to I'd ask this kind of arbitrary question, but. For me, I'd rather have a gun range locally. And know that gun owners have a place to go and practice safely so that they, if they choose to own a firearm. Can own it responsibly and have the skills necessary to use it. Than having them go out in the community and the county and firing them off randomly in the woods where it could hurt somebody. Or choosing to own a gun and never firing it until maybe the time they need to and not. Being appropriately trained and accidentally harming themselves or somebody else because of that. And so this has a lot of value to our community and I think a lot of other counties maybe should consider this.
Councilmember Donovan?
Interesting discussion. Y'all want to talk about privatizing parts of the parks? I don't think that's the agenda item to do that with, but look forward to hearing that discussion and I'm going to vote for this.
Anything else on the motion? Please call the roll.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes, that passes six to one.
The next item up is request AB twenty twenty one dash one five five. Request authorization with the county executive to enter into a lease agreement between Watkin County Flood Controls and District and Brian. Melamar for the annual amount of three thousand five hundred and thirty seven dollars and fifty three cents. In this case, the council is acting as the flood controls and district board of supervisors. It's received a vote of three zero and I so move.
Okay, discussion on this motion? Okay, let's vote.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yeah.
That passes unanimously.
Next item up is AB twenty twenty one dash one seven two request authorization. For the county executive to enter into an interlocal agreement between Watkin County and the city of Bellingham for the coordinated administration. Of the Grace Program in the amount of twenty, sorry, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Even this received a vote of three zero and I so move.
Discussion. Please call the roll.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
That passes seven zero.
Next item up is AB twenty twenty one dash one seven eight resolution seeking. The resolution to seek the funding for the Lummi Island Ferry Modernization. And Preservation Project Including the Build a Grant Program. This received a vote of three zero and I so move.
Discussion on this motion. Okay, please call the roll.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Big yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, there was nothing further from finance.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Um, we have, excuse me. Other items with no committee assignments is AB twenty twenty one dash one sixty five. This is a request for council approval of the proposed charter for the Swiss, which is Snohomish, Watcom, Island, Skagit, and San Juan Counties Group. And I don't know, is Mr. Sado here? I don't know what who's presenting this.
Barry, this is Dana. And so this came up because the the person that's coordinating the Swiss meetings. Had written to me in in February and then again in March, asking me if the council had approved the Swiss Charter that they had forwarded to us. And I forwarded that to council members. So I just wanted to find out from council if you were going to approve the charter. I'm not even positive if the council agreed to fully buy into this group or not. I looked back at some minutes and I couldn't see where the council had agreed to that. I know you went to. The first meeting and then the second meeting, I believe, was cancelled. The third meeting did not have a quorum of the council there. So I'm not sure where the council stands on this issue, but I do know that they'd like to get an answer from you on. Whether or not the council approves of that charter.
Uh, yeah, I think you have that exactly right, Dana. I think that if I remember correctly, I don't remember that the council had taken any kind of a vote. To move forward. So so what does the council want to do with this? Councilmember Kerschner?
Yeah, I looked over the charter and it looks pretty. Benign as far as sort of the goals that the counties are willing to work on together. And it doesn't take any authority from council members, executives, or commissioners away. Um, so I I guess I'd be willing to support it. I haven't been to one of the meetings. I think it's a good idea that we work together. I did appreciate that they were looking for consenses from members of the Swiss. I think that might be hard to get, but it's a noble goal. So I I guess that's sort of my two cents on it. At the same time, I also. Think we all have enough to do and if the council decides it's not something that we want to take on, it could be supportive of that as well.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I was.
Yeah, I was involved in the discussions with this. I and I think this Kirschner's comment that is reasonably benign is accurate. It's it doesn't take anything away from sight. Anything that I think brings focus, particularly dealing with the state legislature on our region, is helpful. And we're serving our citizens well by doing that. My my concerns with this, which I expressed. In the discussion about this was the ability for electeds to um. Designate staff to serve in their place. And I'm on, I won't pick out, pick on anybody, but I'm on one particular board where. In the four years I've been on that, I've never seen an elected from that particular jurisdiction. That's frustrating. So that's my only concern is is who turns up.
Councilmember Frazee.
Yes, I guess my concern is if if one of us doesn't go. Um, and they're and they have a quorum. And take, I I believe they're taking ideas to the state. I would just like to make sure if we're agreeing to the charter that we show up.
Councilmember Ellenbus.
Uh, I hate, I like the idea of being collaborative and listening to our neighbors and. Seeking out um, opportunities that could benefit our region, but um. Uh, there's a reason we're a county council. And um, I'm not really interested in anything that waters that down. And um, I don't think that um, this regional approach was how our. You know, local and state governments were designed to function and so I would prefer that we. You know, not that we want to um, burn any bridges, but I would prefer that we operate as a county council and. And um. Maybe. Not encourage the regional approach.
Councilmember Bird.
Yeah, I like the idea when Councilmember Brown originally proposed it with the concept of collaborating with other jurisdictions. In a way that we could work together and find some shared projects that would create more efficiencies and lower our cost burden overall. Uh, I think there's a lot of value there and I still think there's a lot of value there. The direction of of grouping together to lobby Olympia though, I I'm less excited about. They agree with Ben in that regard. We are a county council of our own. We represent our constituents. And we already have lobbyists and and we already worked through Rossack. Who represents the counties in Washington together as a whole to to do exactly that. So I'm not interested in joining another group. To add another layer of bureaucracy and lobbying essentially. Um. So, yeah, I I've split on this, but. Ultimately, one way or another, I I think before I could vote on it, I'd have to have more information. I think we'd have to put it back into a committee and discuss it and see where it ended up. Who's agreed to it, whether jurisdictions have signed on, what are the issues that they're gonna start tackling or or moving forward with and. What, you know, basically an update from where we left off the last time.
Executives to do.
Yeah, I wanted to give you a perspective. Of course, we have not worked very much on this. This is just an idea. But some of the uh, meetings or exchanges I see from a different perspective than a council would see. I see from the perspective of administration that uh, we deal with things day to day, every day. And and making decisions like, you know, well, I had a great discussion with Skagit County. And Mayor of Burlington and Mount Vernon about the uh, tiny homes. Uh, or shelters, they came and bought this three sixty modular. Uh, and what I was approaching with them with what and and uh, Snohomish County. That we should have a regional approach for for this very issue because people, if we create more uh, places. People will come here from other places. It becomes overwhelming. And that was just one. The second thing was that when we were wanting to talk about the session on the fairies. Snohomish had a request, uh, Skagit had a request, we had a request. So it was able to collaborate and work. Uh, with the with the uh, chair of the committee. That uh, three counties are having similar needs and that we we are able to coordinate. I'm just giving you a couple of examples because the Swiss hasn't actually worked yet. And another thing, don't believe that if we join them, then we are tied to them. That we have to do everything with them all together. That's not the intent. And that was never even discussed that, oh, you know, we have to decide together. Uh, we keep our independence and we pick the topics which we can work together on. And there may be only two things in a whole year. And uh, otherwise we have no other way of uh, or learning and knowing. Where investments are being made, where issues are common and where we can leverage each other's needs. So I see that it is an advantage, but I don't believe that it is meant to be that take away your powers means. Any country's powers or council's powers. It is actually finding ways where we all. Can gain and uh, I I think it's a useful thing.
Councilmember Donovan.
Yeah, we'll get back to the elephant thing here, but Dan, it's buddy. You're at the table and what's a cliche? You're at the table or you're gonna eat. So like, if we can collaborate with folks who are gonna like leverage our lobbying. Or or power or whatever, goals and and strategies, like it's a no brainer. Um. I know what the loss is here. Um, if you're not there, they're gonna do it without us. So I can't get the elephant thing worked. Don't go ahead. I'm sorry.
Councilmember Brown.
I mean, we do have several of examples where this does work. Northwest Clean Air Agency, Opportunity Council, North Sand Behavioral Health. They're all basically five county regional exercises and and WAC, which I I believe is a good thing to be involved in. Is, you know, it's all the counties, including the beh- the behemoth. That's one third of the total um, state. Um, so I think having a more regional uh, discussion is always helpful.
Councilmember Kirschner.
Yeah, just um, Councilmember Frazee's comments made me think about something that um. Is important to note, I think, and that is that um. You know, she said we would need to show up and I I agree with that. If we become part of this. I also just want to remind all of us that we um, we. We couldn't get four votes amongst ourselves to um, support having a retreat where we could talk about our own goals. And so I just want to make sure that we. Are ready to go into a bigger arena with other counties. Um, if we are not able to work together on at least create a vision for our own county. So just a comment and something to think about.
Mr. Ellenbus.
Yeah, just just because you've formed a group or you don't form a group, doesn't mean you can't work collaboratively with other counties, but. I'm just saying I would prefer to um. Do just that, work collaboratively with other counties when it behooves us to and not work collaboratively with other counties. If it's not going to. And I'm afraid that if we join this group and all of a sudden we say, this group represents us. And we go to a. We go to a a meeting and there's an issue and we say, hey, uh, the group says, hey, we want to lobby in this direction. And Watcom County is two of nine votes or whatever. Then the then the group that represents us is saying this is what we want, when in fact it's not what Watcom County wants. So. I just see more cons than there are pros to making it formal. Um, especially in light of um. The way that county governments are set up. I I I had a serious problem with uh, the way the governor changed around. The the health districts willy nilly when we already have pre-designed health districts. So. I I'm not a big fan of this regional approach when we already have county boundaries set up.
Is there any action any council member wants to take on this as far as a motion goes?
Uh, I think Ms. Brown Davis needs a decision, so I'll move approval. At least get a vote on the record.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second for which? For the original motion, I will, I will second the original.
Yeah, Mr. Brown moved approval of that charter.
Wait, uh, hang on. I'm trying for a second. I'm I'm looking at the agenda here. Let's be specific about the agenda bill we're on. Can you say it again?
A B twenty twenty one dash one six five.
I I second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Discussion, Mr. Ellenbus.
Okay, so this vote will approve their charter, not necessarily have us join. Am I correct?
That is my understanding, yes. I mean, our our involvement in any situation. Is is completely at our discretion. There's no time commitment or financial commitment.
Well, it has our name in it, in the title, so. They would just be cis without the W.
You vote against us, you're gonna wreck their name.
Yeah, we could really mess up their acronym.
Councilmember Frazee.
So do we have someone appointed to the Swiss now and? Even if we do, are we allowed to send substitutes? Just I if we're going to agree to this, I really would like someone to always be there and have a voice.
Well, the way it's supposed to work is we're all supposed to be there or a quorum. I mean, that it's not a, it's not a. Uh, individual or two out of the group. Um, the steering committee and the the committee, the executive committee, I think. That formed these charters was uh, chosen to be a couple of people from each county, but. As far as membership goes and meetings go, I think they just put out the invitation and hope as many from each jurisdiction show up as possible. Yeah, Carol, go ahead.
So if uh, if four of us show up, um, just have to. Let Dana know to give, say that we're going to be a quorum. Is that correct or?
This this is Dana. Yeah, so we would always, I would always work with Russell to set the meetings up. And then, of course, send out invites to council members. If there's a quorum of council members that are gonna attend, then notice goes out. And all of that. Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess I I thought someone was appointed and. But now, okay, so we can all show up if we choose.
Yes. Councilmember Bird.
Yeah, um, I guess I I have a fundamental issue with voting on this tonight in approval and the concept that. We started the conversation by the majority of council members here saying that they hadn't heard anything else about this since it first took place last summer. And now we have this and we're gonna vote in favor of it and we don't even know. Whether or not we have a person appointed or I mean, whether or not everyone's gonna attend it. He in a very minimal, if you want to see this approved, shouldn't you at least have a presentation and. Take it to a committee and review it one more time? I mean, you haven't seen it in nine months.
Councilmember Donovan.
I I don't, I think we've seen this a lot and we've meet jointly. Um, it doesn't seem that complicated. I mean, that's just me, but yeah, we've we've had this. If you're there at these meetings, I think Mr. Bur was at those meetings. Um. It's been there. It's it's not, it's not so complicated. And there's, I I know what the, I know what the downside is if if we do this. We just not show up and do that.
Mr. Ellenbus.
Well, look, I understand Councilmember Don and that it's not incredibly complicated, but. I'm not so sure any. I don't want to say any, I'm not so sure a lot of people know about it and. I would, I've heard no feedback from any of my constituents about. The yay or nay on joining a group like this, so. Um, maybe it's because people don't pay attention. Maybe it's because they haven't had time. To hear about it, because there's been anything written in the newspaper about it. Um. Yeah, I'd like more feedback from the people that we represent, because. I don't know. I. Yeah, we can vote on it now if you want.
Further discussion? Councilmember Frazee, then Brown.
If we're going to vote yes or no right now, um. I do want to be a team player with these counties and. I think they put out the call right before COVID hit and then I believe and then we had to go online. Um. So I, yeah, I'm I'm leaning toward yes because I do want to collaborate with. Them. And maybe there are things we could do. Um, bigger, make with the other counties.
Mr. Brown.
Yeah, item one on this is provide a forum for the discussion and review of issues. Consistent with the Swiss mission statement and identify those issues where there is a shared mutual interest. I think that's a valuable exercise. I mean, we we've all, I think, expressed agreement from time to time about. Finding ways to collaborate and share services. I mean, I think we do some shared equipment between us and Skagit. We've had discussions about um, doing a broader nine one one center response. Between us and Skagit, maybe even doing a a full redundant system, say in a place like Snohomish. So. I I I think this could lead to some good ideas that other people have come up with that are in the. In the same jobs as as we are. And I think there's, there's certainly. It just seems logical that there's opportunities to save money for the benefit of our citizens by collaborating in shared services. So. I I don't, I don't see we've got anything to lose and we potentially have got something, you know, quite good to gain.
Yeah, I agree with everything Mr. Brown just said. Um, further discussion. Let's take the vote.
Kathy Kirschner.
Uh, no.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
Stain.
Todd Donovan.
Yeah.
Ben Ellenbus.
Um. No.
Carol Frazee.
Yes.
That passes uh, C four to two with one abstention. Uh, next up is A B twenty twenty one dash one forty eight. Orders amended Watcom County Code three point O eight. Purchasing system to include non-discrimination by county contractors. Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Okay.
We have a motion by Mr. Brown. Mr. Bird seconds. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
Todd Donovan. Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Uh, next is executive appointments to boards, commissions and committees. AB twenty twenty one dash one six seven, request confirmation of the county executives. Reappointment of Megan Porter and new appointment of Dana Weber to the. De- developmental disabilities advisory board.
Move to a.
Move to a point.
I think I got Mr. Donovan first, Carol, you want a second?
Second.
Okay, it's, uh, we have a motion and a second to confirm, discussion? Okay, please call a roll.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Next is, uh, AB twenty twenty one dash one seven five. Request confirmation of the county executive's appointment of Nadine Caland to the Public Defense Advisory Committee.
Move to a point?
Do we have a second?
Second to move.
We have a, we have a motion and a second to confirm, um, discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes. That passes seven to zero. Uh, next is twenty, AB twenty twenty one dash one seven six, request confirmation of the county executive's appointment of Catherine Ketteridge. To the Marine Resources Committee, do I have a motion to confirm? Councilmember Donovan moves?
Second.
Uh, discussion on the motion?
Thank people for applying.
What was that, Todd?
Just thank people for applying to these positions, that's it.
Okay, with no further discussion, please call a roll.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Uh, next is AB twenty twenty one dash one seven seven, request. Confirmation of the county executive's appointment of Nicole Olderson and Austin Hengry. To the Food Systems Committee, do we have a motion to confirm?
Come on, move.
Second.
Kirschner moves, Brown seconds, discussion? Please call a roll.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
That passed to seven to zero. Um, next we have some items that were added by revision, um, for introduction tonight. Would, should we do these one at a time, Dana, since they're by revision?
Yes, please, that would be great, thank you.
Will do. Uh, AB twenty twenty one dash one ninety is an ordinance imposing it in the interim moratorium. On the acceptance and processing of applications and permits for new and expanded outdoor recreational. Cannabis growing and or processing facilities. What's the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, um, I think Mr. Bird, did you move it?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, and you wanted, and yes, Mr. Bird?
Yeah, the, I, I'll make a motion to remove the indoor. Uh, reference, so that it applies to all facilities indoor and outdoor.
I think you meant to saying remove outdoor, right?
Yes.
Okay. We have that amendment, do we have a second to that amendment?
Um, oh, let's, let's hear from Ms. Frakes, cuz that's how I wanted to do it, but.
Well, eh, my comment is that, that particular ordinance was tailored specifically for. Outdoor grow operations and I believe that, uh, different findings would have to be made and. Uh, you know, at, at this late hour, I, I, I don't think we have anybody here from the planning department. That can give us sufficient findings to support it applying to out or indoor grows as well as outdoor grows.
So Karen, would we be able to, um, if, if we, uh, had that discussion in two weeks? The, the night we have the hearing scheduled, would we be able to have that discussion in committee during the afternoon? And then have the hearing on that ordinance?
I, no, you, I mean, you, you would have to have the hearing on, uh, just the outdoor grow. You, you have to give, uh, public notice of the correct ordinance, i- if you wish to do indoor grows. That would have to be a part of this ordinance.
From the word go, from introduction on, right?
Right, but at some point during the process, you could amend it and then wait two weeks to have a public hearing.
Okay, gotcha, Mr. Bird, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, um. Karen, I'm wondering, is there a way? In talking to people, there's a lot of references in, in scenarios where these facilities are. They're taking roofs off or opening them up in a way where they, in the summer now essentially kind of become outdoor. And so is there a way to incorporate that to some extent, or? I mean, is it, or at least limit the ability for a facility to do? That essentially?
I, you know, that was totally new to me, I hadn't heard that before this time and I, I'm not familiar with the definitions. Of our ordinance to know how to deal with that, um, I. I suppose. You know, I, I'm thinking about this, I, I suppose what's important is that. The operative language of the ordinance reflects. Indoor grows and then I suppose later on you could work on the.
Lost you, Karen.
I don't know what it is with internet in Waukesha County today, but wow.
Yeah, it's not a good day for Waukesha County internet, you're right.
It's ticked, it's ticked about the new taxes.
I think, are you back, Karen, we missed everything.
I didn't know I was gone, um, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, uh, yeah, I'm getting a signal that my internet is unstable, so I'm not sure what's going on. Um, eh, I'm, I, I'm just thinking that maybe you could amend the ordinance. The be it ordained part of the ordinance to reflect, uh, its applicability to both. Indoor and outdoor grows and then have the hearing on that and. Uh, meanwhile amend the findings so that the ordinance you ultimately adopt. Has correct findings, the findings, um, what's important is what's in the be it ordained. I mean, it's all important, but, um, I'm not so sure that you need to have the two weeks notice. It would be much cleaner if you, uh, just introduced it in its current form and then. Had planning work on it after it comes to you in two weeks and, uh, amend it. However you, you know, decide to amend it and then have the hearing two weeks from then.
Councilmember Donovan?
Yeah, sort of echoing off that, um, I, I, this introduction item, so I would hope we just introduce this. And, um, I've done some homework on this and if another council member wants to introduce another item. Does the same thing. So let's just introduce this now and then we can move on with another item if that is introduced later.
Okay, right now where we're sitting is on a, a motion to amend from Mr. Bird.
So my, I'm, I'm hoping we just can introduce this, I don't know how to, I don't know how to. And, right, okay, um. This took a bit of time to get this to the point where it could be introduced, so I would hope we could just introduce this now. And if there is another ordinance that would come and, and, and change it to apply it to different things. That apply to different legal standards that we're discussing, that would be a separate item that could maybe come later and we just use this as a starting point.
So I, I will throw that back on to Councilmember Bird, cuz he has that motion on the table at this point, do you wanna withdraw that motion?
Um, I've, I've just taken it through, it saves us essentially two weeks and a little bit of extra paperwork eventually, but, um. Hey, I'd like to hear from the other council members, I, I kinda would like to do it, but the, uh, I sense Todd's reservation. It seems like he doesn't want to, so, um, I'd like to hear from the rest of the council members before deciding.
Uh, Mr. Brown, then Mr. or Ms. Frazee, after Mr. Brown?
Uh, I tend to trust Karen on this stuff in terms of whether, whether it'll stick if we vote on it, so I'd rather. Move forward with this as it is and then suggest that next meeting you introduce an identical. Ordinance that deals with the other side of the. Um, I can't remember, we took it indoor, outdoor, but the other half of it. Do, do it in two parts is the most legally certain way of doing it.
Councilmember Frazee?
Yes, I'd like to take, um, Ms. Frakes. Her idea of, uh, doing that also and, you know, I think there was some. Suggestion to make it an emergency two weeks ago, so I think. Wanna get moving on this.
Yeah, I, I agree with the, with the Mr. Donovan's proposal to, uh, introduce this as is tonight and then. Either have a companion next in two weeks, council member Ellenboss?
It's gonna be another one of them six, seven year deals? Just, you know, so these industries know what they're dealing with, I mean, is that our intent here? That's kind of been our track record.
Councilmember Bird?
I didn't get the reference at first, sorry, it took me a second, uh, it's the latest council meeting we've had in a while, I think. The, uh, okay, it, it sounds like the council in general wants to, to divide them, um. Uh, I'd be willing to kind of pull that back, uh, before I do, Todd, it seems like you had a reason for. For not including it in the first place, though, yeah, do you care to kinda? Yeah, share?
Well, that was stuff we discussed in executive session.
Right, and I don't think you were there, Councilmember Bird.
No, he wasn't.
God forbid, I missed, missed one meeting here in the last six months, I guess that's equal to someone walking out of one, but the, um. All right, I'll go ahead and pull that out. I'll remove my agenda or motion.
And are you giving us the peace sign or you're saying you'll withdraw your second?
No, it was two meetings, uh, somebody walked out of, not one.
Oh, right.
Yeah, we're actually discussing items and voting on items and, you know, I show up to my meetings, I show up to executive sessions. I listen. So, you can do your political statements here, Ben and, and Tyler, but like, you miss a whole lot of votes. If, if you wanna do, if you wanna do this, I'll edit it up.
Okay, let's, let's get back to the matters at hand, who was the seconder of Tyler's motion? Was it you, Councilmember Kirschner?
Oh, I don't think there was a second.
Well, then that makes it easy. Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Kirschner.
I just wanted to, um. It's a tough one for me, um, so I just wanted to say that, um. I didn't vote to legalize marijuana in the state of Washington because I had young kids and, um, could see where. That potentially was going. Um, I drive home from Bellingham down the Guide Meridian and I think I smell pot three times on my way home. And my son does too when he's with me, um. At the same time, these, um, rules were put in place in twenty fifteen when it was kind of cool. To be on the pot bandwagon. And now here we're in twenty twenty one and we are reaping what we sowed as far as. Um, having the rules not be adequate. At the same time, we have families and businesses that have sprung up in the last six years that are. Counting on us to put things in place so that they can then, um, take action, make investments and have businesses. And so, you know, this is difficult because once again we find ourselves. At, at a crossroads where you've gotta, you've gotta make a decision to put a moratorium on and fix the rules when what should have maybe happened is. These rules should have been more thoroughly vetted and bought out before they were passed. So I, I will support this moratorium with the expectation that the planning department, the planning commission. Work steadfastly and expediently on putting the rules that should have been put in place in twenty fifteen before us. So that we can pass them and, and get on with them, the other business that we have to do, cuz I don't like to do these do-overs.
Okay, so we now just have a motion to introduce the, uh. Orness as is. Need further discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Oh, wait.
That passes six to one. Our other introduction item tonight is.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, I just want to confirm, did we get a, did we get a second? Ms. Holker get a second for that main motion?
That was Councilmember Donovan.
Yes, we did.
All right, thank you.
Okay, another, our second item for introduction tonight, which was added by revision, is AB twenty twenty one dash two zero nine. A resolution regarding permanent affordability of childcare in Waukesha County, do we have a motion to introduce?
Move to introduce.
We have a second.
Second.
So a motion and a second, discussion on this introduction item. Councilmember Kirschner?
Uh, when I read this this afternoon, um, I was, I guess I have a question, is it? The majority of the anticipated forty four million dollars that we're expecting to get? Or a different amount, because that seems like a heck of a lot of money to. Uh, dedicate to one area of concern in our county. So Councilmember Brown and Frazee, you guys sponsored this, did you write it?
Councilmember Frazee?
Yes, and, um, yes, it is the majority of the forty four point five million dollars. I think if we're going to make a huge impact on the county and our children. Um, we could, I'm sure everyone right now is thinking about, oh, what can we do with this money and we're just gonna end up spreading it all around. And not seeing huge significant impact and this would make. Uh, this would make childcare affordable forever for people in our county and. When we, when we said yes to the Child and Family Action Plan, um, the three pillars that really. Make children thrive and make a county thrive are housing, childcare and behavioral health. And today we just talked about that tax for housing and behavioral health and if we could. Put the money into childcare and make it where, um, they can have rent either free or very cheap. And that is passed along to the families, we could just make a huge. We could just make a huge impact on our county. And I'll let Councilmember Brown go more into that.
Councilmember Donovan, go next. Two seconds to stand up.
It's an introduction item. I look forward to a lot of discussion on this. I have concerns about it. I want to support it. I'm going to have to really think about it a lot, but I'm totally. Support of introducing it. So that's what we're on here.
Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, I think I should, well, I share Ms. Frazer's enthusiasm for this. And yes, the, 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 the two of us wrote it. I think it's. Though written from listening to the discussions over the last several years and the advice that we've had from. Both the business community and P Hab and. Various other groups, they. There is nothing we can do that will change the game more dramatically with the least amount of money than dealing with the childcare issue. There is nothing, absolutely nothing. We can get more affordable housing for a lot less people than we can if we can allow second parents to go to work. And earn money for themselves to pay for their existing housing. You know, we have identified 5,000 vacant slots. And this will make a real difference in filling those slots or create, sorry, creating those slots, making them viable. And they. If you look at the, if you listen to the business community, they say, I can't hire the workers I want. Because I can't find the workforce housing for them. But we don't need to find the housing if the people are already here and they're already housed. We just need the ability to be able to leave. The children somewhere safe where they will get early education and go to work. So I have to tell you, in the seven years I've been on the council, I, I can't think of a more effective way to move the needle than this.
Councilmember Bird?
I'm looking forward to having this conversation too. I'm hoping that this goes to committee and not just to the general next week or our next meeting for a vote. By the. I think it's interesting. I'd like to learn more. I, I hope that we spend some time actually working through this and discussing it and that it just doesn't get pushed through next time after a presentation. A little bit of me is concerned regarding. I really don't want to create an environment or a community where families have to have both members that were both parents working in order to support the family. And not only now do you have to have both family members working to support the family and to have a house that you can live under, but. Now you have to have the childcare subsidized too because two incomes can't afford childcare and a house. The, I think Todd left again because I'm asking questions. The, no.
No, I'm writing.
I'm sorry, you can respond in a minute, Todd. If you don't, blow it first, but. You know, I think it's, most people I know, when they have kids, they want that opportunity to stay home. And the longer that they can stay home, at least one parent and spend time with that child and raise them. The happier that they are. And I think there's a lot of value in that for children too. And so while I'm interested in this, I'd be a lot more interested in. How could we go back to that environment where families who would rather be able to live off of a single income while having one parent. Stay home and have that relationship with the kid and raise the child hands-on. That they have that opportunity and forcing people into having to have two incomes in order to get by with subsidized childcare. So hopefully this can be a lot broader conversation than just passing this in two weeks.
Councilmember Brown?
First, administrative issue. Because Carol and I have worked on this, it cannot go into finance committees. It must come back to the committee of the whole for a discussion. The second thing is that the, Mr. Bird, I completely agree that in an ideal world. If one, if one parent wants to stay home and be the primary caregiver for raising the children. I'd love to have a world that, that, that was the case. That was the world in my family. You know, my wife stayed home. That is the world in my son's family. His wife stays home. But that being said, the, the, the Child and Family Action Plan, the Business and Commerce Committee. The Baker, sorry, not Baker, Organized Foundation. Studies all show that there is a demand for about 5,000 slots. So that's 5,000 slots for people whose choices at this point. To find childcare. And because they don't have that choice, they're forced into poverty or they're forced into social isolation. Because in some cases, those are single parent families. So when you say that they, they can't have, they should stay home and look after their kids. That's 100% of the parents because there's only one parent. So that's guaranteeing a poor family, it's guaranteeing social isolation. You know. Let's give them the choice to take it if that's what the families want to do.
Mr. Bird?
Yeah, right, I don't disagree with, with a lot of that. The, and I'm very much in favor of looking at how we can support childcare facilities and preschools and everything else so that. They are more affordable and helpful. The, I would just like to be able to look at that broader picture as well. Because we have 5,000 people that are signed up on lists, doesn't necessarily mean that we have 5,000 people who are choosing to put their kids in. We just have 5,000 people that their life circumstances are forcing them to, essentially, or at least some portion of them, right? You'll have a balance there. And so a lot of people I know that are putting their kids in childcare facilities are doing it because they have to have a second job to get by. Not because they want to have someone else raise their child. And I wonder, you know, why we look at this plan and we think about it. There is a lot of value within the plan, but did we actually look at other alternatives to how we build? Families and children and their futures? Or did we just look at that one kind of issue? Because that's, that's. What we're most cognizant of at this time. And so I think it's worth a conversation. Because I think that if we're really looking at, like we were talking about earlier, in regards to the housing tax increase, the. Are we looking at just kind of like working on a piece of the problem? Or are we really looking at how do we solve the whole thing? And if we want to solve that whole thing and really create better families and better futures for these children. Personally, I believe that there are going to be a whole lot better place in the long run if they're able to stay home with a parent who's reading to them every day. Than if they're put into a preschool someplace else. So. I'm hoping we can have that conversation about, let's use it all for the families, but how do we break it up and use different programs and try some, some things out and really find that value in that solution?
Mr. Donovan?
I will speak again in favor of the motion introduced. It sounds like we have some consensus here. So. Let's introduce this item.
Mr. Sedu.
Well, since everybody's weighing in, maybe I should give my perspective to, I support this. I think this is a great idea. But a couple of things that with, and I just read this afternoon. Like majority of funds, I think that is troublesome. And saying that at least two of the facilities should have extended hours. Now, what it seems like that those two would be in Bellingham. What's wrong with having extended hours in Ferndale or Blaine or other places? So I think that, to me, that was that. That it should be a countywide. Second, the other thing is, is how much money? We are looking at $44 million. This is once in a lifetime opportunity for Wacom County to get this kind of money. And I think that there are many other things. I had a suggestion from somebody. And, and they said, Sapa put majority of money, give it to the small businesses. I said, okay, there are 5,000 businesses. How much money you want me to give them? You know, say $1,000 each, that's $5 million. $2,000, what difference a $2,000 would make? If we give $2,000 to all small businesses. Yeah, it's a good gesture. Right? Would it make any difference to that smaller businesses $2,000 if they can't do it with $15,000, $20,000 of PPP? So I think I, my, I'm looking from the overall perspective from the county, what we can do good for our community. On a long-term basis, do something long-term basis. I'll give you an example. When we invested $600,000, $700,000 in food banks last year. Now, that is an investment which will give back to us for next 10, 15 years. Because we would never get that kind of money to do this. So I think we should see that this, and this, this item does fit in that, that we can make a long-term difference. In the childcare industry with this. But I think that it does need a little more thinking. Than just saying, let's put all the money in one and do that. There are many other demands, many other constituencies in our county. And many other holes to fill. So I would come up with some more ideas. This is not the time to discuss this, but I just wanted to say I support this. I think it's a good thing, but we should really keep it proportional to the rest of the county's needs.
Councilmember Kirchner.
Yeah, I, I agree with executives to do. I support looking at this as an option for that money. I feel like we haven't really had a community discussion on the best uses for that money. I see this as just a resolution, so it doesn't like hold the force of an ordinance. But it makes sense to me that we, you know, we as a council, along with the executives team and our community partners. Look at $44.5 million and, you know, figure out, you know, what can we spend it on? How long do we have to spend it? And, you know, come up with a list of items that might be beneficial for the community and then prioritize them. This just feels a little premature. Not that it's wrong, it just feels a little premature to me.
One more fact I want to add, sorry, Todd. There is a $633 million in Washington State for childcare alone. This $45 million we are getting, it does not include COVID response, does not include health department, it does not include schools. It does not include childcare. There is a separate part of money. Our schools, all our schools are going to get. Each school district is going to get 20, 10, 20 million dollars. Health department is going to get a separate funding for that. And, and there's $633 million just for Washington State for childcare. So we have been studying, I think we need a couple of months before we get the whole picture. But this is a great idea and we should introduce it so that get the discussion going, but don't put brackets on it, you know, this much money. We made these number of beds or these number of seats and this much of thing. I think that we should say this should be one of our priority. In, in our next year. Another thing, whatever we create, it has to be operated. We invest the money, who's going to pay for those rich subsidies and other subsidies three years later? So there are a lot of things to think about, but I, I like it. I totally support it.
And I want to remind everyone that since this is a resolution, we aren't, ju- just if we introduce it tonight, doesn't mean we're scheduling it for a hearing for next, in two weeks, so. It's, it's more of a presentation to the council to, to, to see what the thinking is. I think that was the object, wasn't it, Carol and Rudd?
Well, I think. It's first off, it's to start the discussion because, let's face it. When, when you tell any branch of government, there's a windfall of money coming in, everybody's going to start coming up with ideas. What I don't want to do is to leave this till the end of the thing and say, oh, by the way, what are we doing for childcare? Because we've already identified that childcare is a crisis for us. There's a greater crisis than housing. It is the greater crisis. So I, I'm fine if we have. You know, the discussion in two weeks, we'll schedule it for a little bit longer. But, you know, if you look at the thing carefully. It's designed to, to take care of the capital costs in a way that is a permanent change and it's designed to do the contracts in a way. That the people that they're leasing the facilities pay the ongoing operating costs. So it's not a, well, here's the capital cost and where's the operating money coming from? That's in the formula. And the preliminary numbers I've done in talking to people is the formula will work. If we can take away the capital cost of running these, of owning these facilities, the rest of the math is going to start to work and it's. Not only going to work in terms of providing childcare. The staff, it'll work to the point where we can start training the staff professionally and reach the maximum level of certification. For a childcare facility. We can make the math work this way.
Mr. Donovan?
So let's figure out a way we can prove this and have it go to committee of the whole. So it's, it's a resolution. But, and then we can have more discussions. It's, it's not like if we do this now, it goes to public hearing in two weeks. So, so I. If there's a procedure, we can make sure that it goes to special committee of the whole. Very soon. And we have this discussion. It's an introduction item right now. Is it, or is it a resolution? But like, I, I think that's what we're looking for. We get this to special main hall in, in two weeks.
To be clear, as you all know, the procedure is we could have put this as a resolution for a vote tonight. But that, the intent that Carol and I had was, we wanted a robust discussion of this. We want to engage the community on this issue.
Yeah, so.
That's why it's not actually an introduction item like we normally, normally have.
So how about we get this on the next agenda for two weeks from now, special made of the whole?
Absolutely. Councilmember Bird?
Yeah, the, I'm in favor of having it at our next meeting as well. Ready, I hope that you can put together a presentation on, on kind of what you've done and the math formula and what that entails and walk us through it. It sounds interesting. I'd like to learn more and I'm optimistic that in doing so, I. I have a question and I'm hoping that you can kind of work in and address at the same time. And so what I want to know is like. Childcare facilities were profitable 10 years ago, right? And you look at the kids' world and they were fine until last year with the increase in, in minimum wage. That finally put them to a point where they couldn't get by anymore. And there, over time, there's been a number of issues and regulations and costs. That have been passed down from the state and that has been the root cause of why we have less childcare and why the cost of it is so high. And so if we go through this, this process and we, we follow through and vote on what you've put forward. While the math formula works out today, how can we be certain that it will continue to work out in, in five or six years and that we're not just taking that burden off the state's hands? And allowing them to, to further, complicated and increase the cost of, of future childcare facilities? Or is, is there a way to thread that line somehow so that they are more sustainable in the long run? In that we hedge that risk, but I'd like to, I'd like to hear more.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, so I think in, in broad terms, you've got with the childcare facilities, you've got labor, you've got over operating overhead. And you've got the, either the capital cost of owning the facility. You know, either because you buy it, you pay off the mortgage and the interest rate, or you rented from someone who's also, who's otherwise paying off the mortgage and interest. So in rough, if, in rough numbers, the capital cost of a, of a, let's just say. An average to moderate facility is probably, in the case of Boys and Girls Club now, it's running at roughly 8%. That's the total costing. They're running at. My understanding is they're running at about a $15,000 a month loss. After paying salaries and paying for the rent and the rent they're paying is, 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 has been below market. And the rent that the, you talk about Kids World, Kids World was operating. At a break even, well, the reason they shut down is because he was going to have to run at a $600,000 loss. In the year that he shut down. He'd already run at $150,000 loss for the two years prior, and I don't know when he last made a profit. So the challenge, what killed him was the state said the minimum wage has gone up. But the state reimbursement rate stays the same for the quality of the facility that you have. And by that, it's things like outdoor areas, natural light. And by that, it's things like outdoor areas, natural light, um, et cetera, et cetera. And the level of training your staff have received. So the trick is, if you, if you can train your staff, you can retain them, you can pay them a decent salary. And if you have a facility that meets the requirements for, for a high level facility for the state, you get a higher reimbursement rate that allows you to pay for the stuff in the first place. So you start to check all these boxes, you line them all up. And the real needle that you move is, well, if you take away the cost of paying the rent, because you own the facilities, the math works. Now, can I guarantee it's going to work in five years? No, now? No. But I can guarantee you it's going to work better in five years than if we don't.
Um, can I ask Kathy Hawke, who, who was the maker of the motion for, for introduction?
Uh, I have motion by Todd Donovan and second by Tyler Bird.
So I'd like to do a friendly amendment on the motion to include at the end of motion to introduce and add uh, for discussion on April 9th, committee of the whole meeting.
I am fine with.
Is the person that seconded it okay with that? Okay, so the motion is to introduce this and bring it back for discussion in two weeks at committee of the whole. Any further discussion on this motion?
Thank y'all for bringing it forward.
Okay, let's vote.
I'm sorry, can you clarify? You said on April 9th?
I think it's the 6th, right?
I can't hear you, Councilmember Buchanan, but I, I believe it's April 6th.
The 6th, yeah.
Okay, um, I'll call the role Kathy Kirchner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss.
Yes.
Carol Frazee.
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Now we're on to our, our regular introduction items. We have, uh, item number one has a substitute version. It was emailed. Um, item number five has been withdrawn by the treasurer's office. So we are voting, or we're, uh, I'm entertaining a motion to introduce items one through four and six and seven.
So, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Bird moved. Donovan seconds. Discussion. Councilmember Kirchner.
I just want to thank Councilmember Frazee for bringing forward the ordinance amending the, um, public nudity code that Watkin County has. I've seen that for years and thought I should do that. I'm going to totally support that. Um, I do want to ask, because I think this is where we would make a change to it if we were going to before we introduce it. Um, you do use the word parent in there rather than female, which is used in the first sentence. And, um, I just wonder if, um, a person isn't a parent, that do you think that this ordinance should apply to them if they're breastfeeding, like maybe a surrogate or something else? Did you specifically choose the word parent? Um, because what I would, what I would do is, is if it doesn't matter to you, I would recommend that we use the word female throughout, so it's consistent. Because I don't think any male is going to be breastfeeding, not yet anyway.
Um, I would intentionally like to keep it parent. Um, or it could be guardian.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion, motion to introduce items one through four and six and seven? Okay, please call a roll.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss.
Yes.
Carol Frazee.
Yes.
Kathy Kirchner.
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Uh, next up is committee reports. Our first committee this morning was, uh, uh, committee of the whole executive session. We had two items. We had a discussion pending litigation with civil deputy prosecutor Chris Quinn on the Erickson versus Watkin County Flood Control Zone District, Watkin County Superior Court case, uh, number 20 dash 2 dash 00650 dash 37. Um, we, uh, encouraged some further negotiation on this and there was no action taken. Uh, item number two was AB 2021 dash 174, uh, discussion of pending litigation with civil deputy prosecutor Brandon Waldron regarding Tojek versus Watkin County at all, uh, in Watkin County Superior Case, case number 21 dash 2 dash 001 17 dash 37. And, uh, we would need a motion. I think Mr. Donovan has that, uh, for indemnification.
I have a motion and, uh, I move that the Watkin Council, County Council met in the executive session concerning the lawsuit of Tojek versus Watkin County at all, Watkin County Superior Court number 21 dash 2 dash double O's, double zero, 117 dash 37, pursuant to Watkin County Code 22.56. The county council hereby finds that George Roke was acting in a manner in which the county had an interest and George Roke was acting in the discharge of a duty imposed or authorized by law and George Roke asked it, acted in good faith. Employee George Roke will be defended and indemnified to and consistent with the provisions of Watkin County Code, Chapter 2.56 and I assume.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Frazee seconds. Discussion on the motion. Please call a roll.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss.
Yes.
Carol Frazee.
Yes.
Kathy Kirchner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
That passes 7-0. Next committee that met was Natural Resources and Councilmember Donovan, do you have a report?
Yeah, Natural Resources had a, a presentation, um, from Chris Elder on the, um, the impacts and the risks of, um, climate change to Watkin County Council as part of the larger work that the Climate Impact Advisory Committee is doing. Uh, some of it was sobering. It's actually, if, if you look at the, uh, the thing in our packet, it's a really interesting, uh, useful document highlighting where the county has um, high impacts in terms of climate change for, you know, coastal impacts, transit, um, building and where we have capacity. And, and, and I think that's, that, that's, that's the most important thing is like where we have the capacity for those things. So they're going to come back to us, I think by May, about some, some more, uh, reports about where, where we can address those things. Um, it was, it was, it was, it was actually sobering and encouraging in terms of where we do have capacity to respond to some of the stuff. So that was Natural Resources.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from Finance, Mr. Brown?
There was nothing else from Finance, Mr. John.
Okay, uh, then moving on to Public Works and Health.
Yes, we had a report from Watkin County Public Works, Mr. Carter, about, um, what they have done, um, this past year and also we're, we're going and I, if you want to know what's going on with all the projects and what the team is doing, you could listen to that, uh, presentation. And also they brought up, um, Mr. Hutchings and Mr. Carter brought up that there, um, we're looking for licensed engineers and technicians in the public works department. And we're looking for qualified people. So please, if there's anyone out there who needs a job, um, please look at our job board.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Frazee. Next was, uh, public or, uh, planning and developmental services. Mr. Ellenboss?
Yeah, um, we had a discussion about, um, the planning commission's recommendation to, um, review ways in which the public participates. Probably the best way to summarize it. And I think we left with the idea that, um, Councilmember Donovan and Planning Commissioner McClendon were going to put together, um, some language possibly to bring forward that would put a committee together that would be sunsetted at some time um, to make some recommendations on, um, possible changes that could be beneficial in the future.
Okay, thank you. Our, uh, last committee this afternoon was committee of the whole. We had three items. First one was discussion on update of, uh, COVID-19. It was an encouraging report by our health director. I would, I would, uh, really encourage the public to go look at that, uh, presentation at our committee of the whole meeting this afternoon. Our case rates are declining and things are looking good. So, um, you can gain a lot of information by looking at that. Um, the other thing we discussed was discussion regarding impacts of the Blake decision. Our prosecutor and, uh, and, uh, our attorney, Ms. Frakes, uh, went over a lot of the details of the Blake decision, which was the Supreme Court of Washington, uh, declaring the, uh, I'm trying to think of the right word, uh, controlled sub, not controlled substance, illegal. Possession, yeah, thank you. Possession as, uh, there was an intent thing missing out of the law. So, uh, there's a big impact on the state, roughly a hundred million dollar impact on, on, uh, fines and, and other things. So it's something that's a big work in progress and we kind of had our first briefing on it today. So that was committee of the whole. Um, any other business for the council tonight? Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, I just to add a little bit to Ms. Lotton Box's comments. Um, things are looking up in terms of COVID, provided we keep doing what we need to do.
Yep. Okay, uh, any other business or council member updates?
Hey Barry, can I interrupt for just a second?
Absolutely.
Go back to.
Okay, I forgot that. I, I will go back to that.
Okay.
On item number two, uh, was a discussion of a letter from Incarceration Prevention Reduction Task Force to state, uh, legislatures on funding of the Crisis Stabilization Center and establishing the center as a state pilot program for diversion. We need a mo- a motion for, uh, that letter that you saw today. Uh, should they need to send that? They want to have that, uh, motion kind of on file so they can send that. So I would move approval of that letter.
I'll second that. Tyler seconded.
Moved and seconded, um, discussion. Okay, please call a roll.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss.
Yes.
Carol Frazee.
Yes.
Kathy Kirchner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes. That passes 7-0. Now, is there any other business or council member updates for us? Okay, everybody, it's been lovely. We will see you in a couple of weeks. We're adjourned.
Thanks, Charlie.